planning committee meeting for tonight on the second twentieth, sorry, thirtieth of July. Can I just make a number of opening statements? Welcome to the meeting. I need to go through some housekeeping matters. This meeting has been streamed via YouTube and recorded. Yes, that's on now. The recording will be uploaded to YouTube within two working days where it can be assessed by anybody. Members, please use the microphone in front of you when talking and ensure you turn your microphone off once you've finished speaking. Another member or officer will not be able to speak if your microphone is still on. Please note for council's visual equipment may on occasions focus on or near the public gallery area. Therefore, those in attendance of this meeting may be filmed or recorded. Attendance of this meeting signifies your agreement to this. If as a member of public you do not wish to be filmed or recorded, please inform a member of the council staff in attendance and we will try to assist where reasonably possible. On hearing the fire alarm, we ask all attendees to immediately evacuate the building. Please evacuate via the nearest fire exits which were just outside and make your way to the community square outside the main reception doors. Thank you. Right, apologies for absence, item two.
We've received no apologies for absence.
Right, thank you. To sign the minutes of a previous meeting which I have in front of me, which was on the second of July, can maybe agreed? Thank you, I will sign those. Declarations of interest, does any member of the committee have any interest in any item on this agenda? I'm looking round, I see none. Which moves me on to item five, consider whether any items in part A of agenda should be considered in private or the items in part B in public. I've no reason to move any item into part B. So we're now moving on to the planning applications for determination by the committee. Can I just inform you how I intend to proceed with this? What will happen is there are five items to be considered. In each case, the, an officer will introduce the item. It will then be open to any members of the committee to ask for points of clarification or information, not stating a particular point of view, just information or clarification. I will then open that to ward councillors if they wish to ask for clarification or information or to any other councillors. Once we've introduced the item, then we will move to the speakers. We will take the speakers for the application first. In each case, speakers will have three minutes. At the end of the three minutes, they will have to stop and again, members of the committee can ask for points of information or clarification, again, not stating opinions. That will then be offered to other councillors who are present. We will then take speakers, three speakers up to three speakers against the application. Again, we will have three minutes and again, clarification and information can be sought. At the end of that point, I will then invite ward councillors to give a comment, they can give up to five minutes of a comment on the application. They will then offer it to the leaders of the council and I don't see the lead of the opposition. The leader of the council can speak on the item and it's not limited, time limited. At the end of that point, the members of committee should then discuss the application and at some point determine the application. Hopefully that's clear. So we will move then into the first of the five items, which is item two oh two five oh three six nine, which is the Peacock Public House, seventy eight Peacock Street, Gravesend. Can this be introduced?
Thank you Chair. So the proposal before members tonight is for the change of use of the public house to place of public worship or religious instructions with no external alterations to the building. The address is the Peacock Public House, seventy eight Peacock Street, Gravesend. The site is located on the corner of Peacock Street and St Andrews God Road. This is a location that is subject to an existing resident parking scheme. Due to the neighboring properties having shallow front gardens, the residential properties in the area do not generally benefit from off-street parking and have to park on street. These photos show the existing public housing context. It should be noted that the upper floors of the building are being used for residential accommodation and are not the subject of this application. This is an external aerial view of the site taken from Google Earth for additional context. The plan before you is the layout of the existing basement. It's currently being used as a storage area associated with the public house and will be used as a storage area related to the proposed place of worship with no alterations proposed. The applicant proposes to alter the ground floor so that it can be used for a prayer hall area for religious instruction for up to sixty five worshippers. It should be noted that the applicant does not expect the mosque to be at full capacity for all prayers with the busiest prayer in a typical week being the Friday midday prayer. The site is proposed to host five prayers during the course of a day. I set out in the committee report, in addition to that, there will be at least two prayers for each during the course of a year. I set out in the committee report, the applicant is proposing to use the building for educational activities for up to thirty children in the early evening on the weekdays and on weekend mornings. Details of the evidence provided to show that the public house is unviable include evidence of sales brochure by CDs, viability assessment based on the sale of the property in twenty twenty four stating an eighteen month struggle to sell the property with no interest from public house operators, lower sales since Covid, works needed to the property which have exacerbated the matter. A marketing assessment for alternative buyers began in twenty twenty two. The eighteen month marketing exercise proved unsuccessful in terms of interest from public house operators. As a result, the public house closed in January twenty twenty four when sale to the current applicants was completed. The proposal is considered by officers to accord with the requirements of paragraph ninety eight of the MPPF. That paragraph is set out as follows. And essentially, the loss of a community facility, social struck community facility is being replaced by one that, yes, it doesn't serve an identical purpose but meets the broad emphasis of the requirements of paragraph ninety eight. With regards to neighbor, neighboring amenity, for context, this slide sets out that the hours of operation of the public house, it should be noted that the public house was not restricted in terms of patrons. A planning commission in the nineteen nineties did restrict the amount of noise that could be generated at the site from amplified sounds. That's covered by planning application reference one nine nine five zero five zero, sorry, five seven zero. To assist members, this slide sets out the longest and shortest days of the year and what the prayer times for these days would have been earlier in twenty twenty five and in late twenty twenty four respectively at the Gravesend Central Mosque. The proposal is to operate within similar timeframes, so as it shows summer solstice with solstice solstice, which is the longest day of the year. The earliest prayer would be at four AM and the latest prayer would be at the ten forty five PM. On the winter solstice, the earliest prayer would be around six forty five AM with the latest prayer being around eight PM. Noise concerns are a particular concern in terms of residential amenity. The evidence provided shows that it will be within acceptable limits and the noise impacts of attendees arriving and leaving is considered to be low. Conditions are proposed to assist in limiting any noise generated within the building and a temporary planning commission is recommended so that the impact of the use can be more fully understood. Another key concern relates to parking and highways. It should be noted that Casey C S, the highways authority have not objected to the scheme. The existing public house would have had parking implications. These are demonstrated by the requirements set out in SPG four which are the council's adopted parking standards. And in short, two parking spaces would have been required for the, for any existing members of staff and six parking spaces would have been required for the customers struck patrons of the public house. As a reason, in additional, in addition to that context, the area is covered by an existing TRO, Zone B. We have engaged with parking services who have considered the current parking in the area and advised that due to the lack of existing parking in their view, the TRO does not need to be amended for the proposed use and that inevitably attendees will be required to utilise Park Street car park should they arrive by car purely due to the lack of on-street parking. As such, the net parking increase when taking into account the spaces needed for the place of worship would be an increase of five, so up to thirteen. However, the site is considered to be in a sustainable location, as set out in the report. It is proposed that a condition is imposed to encourage sustainable modes of travel and active travel and to encourage responsible parking. A temporary planning commission is recommended so that the impact of the use can be more fully understood in that respect. So the recommendation before members tonight from officers is as set out in the report for a temporary permission. However, a couple of modifications are proposed to take a proportionate approach to the travel and parking management plan. The focus of the plan in terms of monitoring is to be the main prayers, e.g. Friday midday prayer and to allow attendees to leave the building in a safe manner after the evening prayer. Is proposed that the hour of operation be changed from eleven PM to eleven thirty PM. That concludes my presentation Chair, thank you.
Thank you. Right, members of the committee, any points of information clarification that's required? I see none. And councillor Elliot?
Just going back to what you said about the noise impacts of arriving and leaving considered to be low. I was just wondering how you came to that conclusion, what evidence there was to support that. Thank you.
Thank you Chair. So environmental health colleagues have looked at the evidence provided by the applicant and they've analyzed it against standard procedures in terms of that service. They've also considered, as we have, the ting and froings from a public house. And in that context, what's being proposed isn't considered to be an issue. The other factor to remember is in terms of the public house. There was a noise condition on a previous decision, environmental health, for example, having even proposed a similar noise condition in relation to the place of worship on the basis that the other conditions kind of limiting windows being opened restricting external calls for prayer etcetera addresses noise concerns from the, within the building itself. The real concern any would be effectively from an environmental health point of view is people leaving and going to the building primarily during the early morning prayers. So that's known as the fajr prayer, as set out within the report and during the summer period, the earliest time that would be, would be at four PM, sorry, four AM in the morning. And the concern there, there from their point of view is around and one of the reasons why the temporary permission has been proposed is because whilst the, the exact number of patrons to the mosque and attendees would be unknown at this stage, it's anticipated that the number would be low. So based on, in discussions with the applicant, maybe they can provide some additional information on this. One wouldn't expect more than a handful of people to be in attendance at the morning prayer at four PM. And on that basis, the conclusion reached by colleagues is that there shouldn't be any significant impact at that time of day, however, to alleviate concerns, they would like it monitored via a temporary permission.
Councillor, do you want to come back?
Thank you very much Chair. So if I understood correctly, I've just heard a lot of talking, I've heard using the pub, public house leaving times as some sort of evidence. And then a lot of guesswork, to be honest, is what I just heard. The difference being, of course, a public house doesn't have coming and going at four AM, so you've got coming and going later. So you've got coming and going later at night and then possibly also early in the morning. So I'm struggling to see where the evidence is.
Counselor, can I?
Consider as all of that.
I think you're no longer asking a question or clarification. I think you've given a statement.
I've asked for evidence and I haven't really heard it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. In terms of the precise evidence, if we could go on someone else, I'll open the actual document and refer to it. Thank you, Chair.
Slid Tandy.
Thank you, Chair. It's mainly a safeguarding issue because no car parking, parking is a main issue. When people visiting the mosque or the children coming there, the people will stop the car in the middle of the road and then that will cause a problem for those people who's behind and also for people for those who, the car's coming there. So it's called a safeguarding issue, how we can manage that.
Thank you, Chair. Just to go back to Counselor Elliott's query, the precise document that's been viewed by environmental health colleagues is entitled Planning Noise Assessment dated March twenty twenty-five. It's available on the public portal for everyone's view. With regards to Counselor Tandy's query in terms of safeguarding, no concerns have been identified from an officer perspective with regards to safeguarding. Otherwise, we would have had to report those. In terms of access to the building and safely dropping off children to, for example, the evening classes or the weekend classes, the principal responsibility for that would lie with the adult or individual dropping those children off. That's not something that we can deal with via this application.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. Just a quick question. If we go from six point four two until six point four five, you know, there are recommendations in relation to travel plan, et cetera, and the number of vehicular spaces that should be there. Have officers just decided to totally ignore that?
Zan?
Thank you, Chair. As I alluded to in the presentation, officers have taken into account the sustainability of the site as we do with, as we would do with other uses within the town centre. And our recommendation is based on that best practice. The site is in a sustainable location in terms of active travel, et cetera. It's accessible, it's accessible by public transport. It's, in effect, if it's not within the town centre, it's right immediately adjacent to the town centre boundary. It's within walking distance to Parx Street car park. Literally, you can walk from the car park to this site within a few minutes. So all of that's been taken on board. And that's why we've provided the recommendation that we have. So no, it's not being ignored.
Thank you. Do you want to come back? Just in particular, I just want to get this absolutely right. So the KCC parking standards have given a recommendation. Just want to make it clear that officers feel that that's not an informed view and that that's not a correct state of play.
Thank you, Chair. As the Council of Justice will be aware, committee has determined other applications within the town centre where the full quantum of requirements of KCC's parking standards haven't been met. Based on officer recommendations in those instances, the same practice has been followed with regards to this site. Thank you.
Thank you. I've seen Counselor Hard.
Thank you, Chair. I mean, looking at the maps, my main concern is safety. I don't want to argue about because we are assuming that, because it's a group of people would be using the Law Street car park and they're crossing a Parx Street on the way to Grove Road and especially Andrew, so on. And unlike a pub, you know, people come to drips or drops all day. Well, we're talking about a bulk of people turning up at a set time. I mean, we could debate about what time, but it's a number of people and a busy morning. As we all know what the morning can be, so my main concern in the safety of the people on their way walking from Law Street to the place of worship. And of course, when they've finished their services, they will most certainly walk back. So I'd like to address if the safety issue has been addressed. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Suzanne.
Thank you, Chair. So in reality, that concern isn't one that's held by planning officers and we've consulted KCC highways, who are the highways authority. Should they have had any concerns in terms of the functioning of that particular road and any crossings there? It would have been their duty to raise those and they haven't. And the reality is Parx Street is a large car park, it is well-used. People do leave that car park in a number of directions. Not all of those directions have immediate crossings. Just for example, there's no crossing between the civic centre, the back of the civic centre and said car park. And people actively on a daily basis cross at that particular point. And to date, there's never been any incidents. So on practice, that concern hasn't been realised today and isn't a concern that officers have. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. I'm now looking around for any other members of the council seeking points of clarification. I've seen none. So at that point, we will now move to for three speakers for the application. The first one being Harris Cusin, you see, I'm sorry, forgive me. Thank you. Take a seat. As you will be aware, there will be three minutes. You'll be guided by the lights which are in front of me. The amber light will come on when I think there's one minute to go. And then when the red light comes on, you will have to stop. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chair. The development before you is a planning application for a change of use from a vacant public house to a place of worship. This is not a political issue, nor is this application anything to do with immigration. The subject proposal is a resubmission of a previously refused scheme and there are now no planning policy grounds to refuse this application. In fact, there is no planning justification even for a temporary two-year consent. The principle of development is clearly supported by the adopted development plan. Both the existing and proposed use is considered physical and social infrastructure that is supported by policy CS ten of the local plan. There are no external alterations proposed to the building. The public house has been fully marketed for a period of three years and two months and there was no viable interest in the property for use as a pub or any other community use. There is ample alternative provision with nine pubs within a seven-minute walk of the application site. There is a significant under-provision of Muslim prayer facilities in Gravesham overall. There are only two mosques in the borough, while seven point four percent of the eight thousand two hundred population in the town ward is Muslim. This modest additional provision of a place of worship will alleviate demand on the Gravesend Central Mosque. Policy CS oh nine is therefore engaged. The existing use of the premises is a significant material planning consideration as a fallback position. The public house has no planning hours of use restrictions and is not subject to any noise conditions. The public house has been subject of many noise complaints in the past and regularly hosted live gigs with no noise restrictions. In contrast, the applicant will insulate the building and has agreed to hours of use restrictions. The use itself is quiet with worshippers praying in silence behind a single creature. Prayers take around ten to fifteen minutes. Only the dusk evening and dawn prayer is audible and even then it's only the Imam and that will recite audibly for around five minutes. The rest of the prayer is silent. Worshippers typically leave straight after the prayer. The evening prayer takes place no later than ten fifty PM at the height of summer, whereas the earliest the public house closed was eleven thirty. Worshippers come and go, they do not loiter, and the applicant will ensure that worshippers leave straight after prayers in a quiet manner. Detailed noise and highways impact assessments have been submitted, which includes an assessment of the comings and goings of worshippers. There is no objection from environmental health or highways and neither of these consultees has suggested that a temporary consent is appropriate. The existing public house is not subject to any parking restrictions and does not have any parking provision. The site is located in a highly sustainable location. There are car parking restrictions in the surrounding area and there is ample parking provision in public car parks within two minutes walk of the site. This arrangement works for the pub and will equally work for the place of worship. The proposed change of use does not detrimentally impact on amenity or highway safety and we respectfully request that this application is approved on a permanent basis. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Cusigi. Right, members of the committee, any questions? Counselor Scholar.
Thank you, Chair. You haven't expressed how many people actually you'd be using the temple when you give your figures that you've only got two temples at the moment and obviously there's a massive need for this. And my main concern at the moment is you are using it at four AM in the morning, you are using it at six AM in the morning. People will be travelling to the temple, either being dropped off in cars or walking to the temple, talking to each other in the residential area. Do you think that's suitable? Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
Yeah, so in terms, we've, we've employed very expert noise consultants, sound consultants, and they've done surveys. These are surveys that are based on other mosques, mosques in London. And they're very experienced people. They deal with casinos, twenty-four-hour casinos as well, these same people. And in terms of comings and goings, these are generally very low. The recordings that they've taken are very low, they're below ambient noise levels. So there is really very little impact in terms of comings and goings of people in that, at that time of the morning. I mean, the people that are going at that time of the morning, these are people who are waking up in the middle of the night to go and worship. They're not the type of people to be making loud noises and, you know, causing a disturbance. These people are going to pray to their lord at four. They've woken up and gone, you know, left the coziness of their bed and gone outside to go and pray. They're not the type of people who are going to be causing disturbances because that's something that weighs heavily on their own conscience. And it's, there are mosques up and down the country and it's not a problem anywhere else. So I can't see that there would be a problem here. And mosques are usually found in residential locations. There are at least six hundred people within the town, Muslims within the town ward. So most of the people that will go in there actually live in the ward, are within walking distance of the site.
Thank you, Counselor.
You still haven't answered the question, how many people are you imagining that are going to be using the temple? Because it is a built-up residential area. Thank you.
Are you talking about in the morning? So yeah, typically in the morning, you might be looking at maybe ten people. During the afternoon prayer, which is around one thirty, you'd be probably talking about fifteen or twenty people. Same in the late afternoon prayer. The prayer at sunset would probably be around fifteen or twenty people. The late evening prayer, similar, and then early morning is around ten. It's not, the, you know, I would love to stand here, sit here and say to you, it's going to be at peak capacity and everybody's going to be coming. But unfortunately, it doesn't work like that. There is capacity within the building for up to sixty-five worshippers, but we do not anticipate at all that it will be full on a day-to-day basis. On the Friday prayer, yes, possibly, because there's a big demand on the Friday afternoon prayer. But those are the hours where the pub would have operated. I mean, the pub had sporting events, live gigs. Typically would have had hundreds of people, at least over a hundred people in there for those events. And there's a video evidence of that online as well. So the, in terms of numbers, they're far less, they're similar actually towards what it would have been.
Counselor Scholar, do you want to come back?
Thank you, Chair. So if you're only using between ten and fifteen people using the prayer, the facilities at one time and you've got two buildings, can they not be shared in that as opposed to being in a built-up residential area? Thank you.
So I don't understand, what's your point?
You're saying you need, you need the prayer place for up to ten to fifteen people because of the growing Muslim community, which I understand and appreciate. But my worry is further down the line, it is going to impact on the local people in the, in on the residents within the area because it's going to get a bigger following. And I just feel that it's an inappropriate area to actually build a mosque at the moment. Thank you.
Counselor, can we keep to a question rather than opinion? Counselor Jassel.
Thank you, Harris, for your speech. You mentioned that there are around six hundred Muslims living in the town ward now. You then say that, you know, you're looking at ten to fifteen worshippers in the morning, et cetera. And the detail here is key for residents. What rationale or algorithm, or have you come to that conclusion from six hundred to only ten to fifteen will come? Is there a reasoning behind that? Because obviously to residents, you just need to get this kind of right.
There is a large Muslim population and that, you know, in the same way that there's a large Christian population, not all Christians go to church every Sunday. But you still have a number of churches in the area. The need, need for a building is not a planning issue, it's not a consideration in a planning matter. The area for consideration is, does it meet with planning policy? And that's all that a planning committee has to decide upon is, if it meets with the planning policy, then it should be approved. Need is not a factor.
And Counselor Jassel.
Sorry, maybe you didn't understand my question. I'm not questioning the need, I'm questioning the rationale on the numbers that you've quoted and that is a material planning consideration, the number of people that will be using that. So you say there are a large number of Muslims that live within the town ward, six hundred. You then state that maybe only ten or fifteen were using in the morning. I'm not questioning the need. I'm questioning the rationale behind deducing that number.
That's the number that the applicant has anticipated they'll be coming to the, you know, the mosques, they don't, you know, we don't expect from experience that it would be at capacity for every prayer. It just, it just doesn't work like that. So, you know, there is capacity there for the sixty-five people maximum. But, you know, our expectation is that, our expectation and the experience is that it will not be operating at capacity.
Thank you. I'm now looking around for any other member of the council who may have a question. And I don't see anybody. So thank you very much, Mister. Thank you for your comments and answering questions. That brings us to the second speaker, which is Ansar Rafiq. Once again, I think three minutes and be guided by the lights.
Good evening, Chair and members of the committee. My name is Ansar Rafiq and I'm the chairman of the Gravesend Central Mosque. I am here today to express the support of the local Muslim community for the application submitted by the Al-Hak Academy. The application has been brought forward to meet a well-established and growing need within gracious Muslim population for structured educational provision. The academy is intended to provide evening and weekend classes focused on Islamic education for children and young people in the borough. The demand for such provision has increased significantly as the local population has grown. The application addresses this in a purpose-built and policy-compliant manner. The facility will operate during off-peak hours, which significantly limits any potential disruption to the neighbouring uses. The proposed development has been designed in full accordance with local and national planning policy. The applicants have submitted a complete suite of technical assessments, including transport and parking management and environmental impact and site layout. These demonstrate that the proposal will take, have no adverse effect on the local community. In particular, there are parking restrictions on the street and these are effective. The proposed use as a place of worship will have less impact on the amenity than the existing pub use. This is a necessary development that serves a specific, specific local community need without compromising local amenity. We ask the committee to recognise that the proposal is policy-compliant, addresses a real and ongoing need and has been developed responsibly and transparently. We therefore request that the application is approved. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rafiq. I'm looking around once again for members of the council. Any comments, questions? Mr. Bunga, Counselor Bunga.
Thank you, Chair. We know the West Cor.
We know the Westmore Mosque, North Clodagh Mosque, they are out of town enough, they're in the open. There's no parking problems at all. We ourselves bring to both the mosques as ample parking for the people using the mosques. When it comes to Peacock, Peacock, Wellington, St Andrews, they're very congested roads. And when you've got children learning, you'll be dropping them off, you're picking them up. And the thing is, the children can't take longer to get in and out. So at the moment, you'll be parking in the middle of the road. There's no other space for another vehicle to go along past while children are being dropped off or picked up, yeah? Now, right on the corner of Peacock Street and, and St Andrews, there used to be white vans, as you saw in the first picture, right up to the corner. I'm being a driver instructor for a long time. As you come out from St Andrews into Peacock Street, I know it's a one-way road. If you come to the end, there's a van right parked on the corner and both sides. So when you're coming up with a learner or even anybody else, you've got very limited view. You're really taking your life into hand when you're coming out. Yeah? So what I'm saying is, although there's restrictions for parking, two hours and so on, after seven o'clock in the evening, it's a residence only, not for the public. So what I'm trying to say is, do you not agree that it will be causing a lot of, um, how can I say, delays which can lead to aggravation by the public? And that's my concern, that it can have detrimental effect on the relationship by the local and also the travelling public.
Councillor, thank you, but can we keep to a question, not an opinion at this stage? I think you've got a message. Um, would you like to comment, sir?
Yes, uh, the only thing I would probably just say to councillor's question there is majority of the people using the facility will be walking to the, the actual mosque for, for the evening classes. And we currently see that in the Gravesend Central Mosque as well, that majority of the people that bring their children, they walk to the mosque rather than use a car, or, you know, they use public transport. But in this case, uh, like the speaker before myself has said, the majority of the people will be using a walking to the, to the mosque or the evening classes. Hopefully that answers your question. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, councillor Hard.
Oh, thank you very much. Um, I should try to get my head around the, the numbers involved. And, and I should, um, to pre the speaker, uh, spoke about the numbers. Uh, probably understated the numbers of fifteen people. I also want to explain that I've been to both of the mosques in Gravesend and then Oxmo, they're very large sized with lots of parking spaces. And I'm at a loss why we are unable to facilitate the fifteen people that we, there is a need to build yet another building where with such a low number of people, as you have mentioned, why is there a need to do that? Where we already got very considerable-sized places of worship. Thank you.
Um, councillor, can I ask, we concentrate on planning questions in that sense. Um, thank you.
Good answer.
On C S.
Uh, yeah, thank you very much, councillor. Um, I agree that numbers are, uh, low on a normal four o'clock uh, in the morning. And hopefully, if, if you're ever up at that time, you know, maybe you can come to the mosque and see that is the truth. However, if you also come on a Friday prayer to, uh, the Gravesend Mosque, um, you will see that we are actually having to pray outside in the car park, in the mosque car park on a Friday. And hence, that's what I believe that there's actually a real need. And again, I think that majority of the people that come to the Gravesend Central Mosque come from the vicinity of the town centre, who walk to the mosque, and I think they will do that. The third mosque will alleviate the pressure that we are currently seeing, uh, in our mosque. Uh, also Eid prayers, uh, that were mentioned earlier on. On Eid prayers, we are having free Eid prayers, and we are also having to pray outside. Uh, as you will know, we try to do Eid in the park to alleviate that issue. However, because of weather, we've not been able to, and even Eid's just gone, uh, you know, we had to, uh, use outside prayers. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Milner.
Uh, thank you, Chair. Just one, one question. Um, we've spoken about the parking and people walking. How are you going to approach, um, your people that are going to come to the, the prayers on arriving and going home, um, for being bit quiet, things like that? How are you going to promote that?
Uh, thank you very much, councillor. Uh, I'm sure, I think you have visited the Gravesend Mosque as well. And you know that we have ample volunteers, uh, that basically manage the traffic flow. And I will, uh, I'm sure, uh, the people have, that have applied will have similar uh, inner processes in place, that they will have volunteers to manage the parking. And so hopefully, that will not be an issue in terms of, uh, you know, people blocking up the roads, uh, like one of the councillors said earlier. Thank you.
Can I, can I just add that we?
Thank you, Chair. Um, councillor Milner, we had, um, what you've just said in mind. Um, so condition three, um, if members are minded to, um, to give a temporary permission to this proposal is effectively for that, so that, uh, a management traffic and parking management plan, um, can be produced, which is, addresses your concerns in terms of what guidance would be provided to those coming to the site? What would that guidance include, et cetera, et cetera?
Thank you. Any other members will comment? No, thank you, Mr. Rafiq. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Can I then invite councillor Hussein to come forward again, speaking for three minutes for the application?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Ashraf Hussain. I, I live directly opposite number seventy-eight Peacock Street. I've lived there for the last ten years, and my family's have been live, been locally for the last forty years. I have seen firsthand, uh, problems with the old pub on Peacock Street. There was certain, there was a number of times constantly antisocial behaviour, people hanging around outside, shouting, arguing, late nights. When Covid restrictions were lifted, things got even worse. I saw people using drugs near the alleyway. And one night, after one AM, the loud, loud music still inside the pub. My family and I, we could not sleep all night throughout that night, right? Young children in the house as well, right? My car got smashed up right outside the pub because there was a fight inside the pub. And then eventually going outside, from inside to outside, and the, and the fight, start fight. And then my car got smashed there. A mosque will not do nothing like that, will be peaceful, will be respectful, respectful, will be dignified and well-managed. No alcohol, no loud music, and no groups outside causing antisocial behaviour. All right, right now, I and many others, right, we use Albion Terrace and also drive to, uh, St Hilda's uh, for our local prayers. And, uh, walking to those distances is quite hard, right? And I also have to carry, I also brought my father-in-law with me, with an elderly gentleman. I normally drive him there for his prayers all the way to St Hilda's or the Albion Terrace. Um, if this mosque opens, then it'll be quite easy for us. We just have to walk. And it was that mosque, right? And it would be a very easy walk. The Mus, when Muslims first moved into Gravesend, sixties and seventies, right? Many of them settled around the town, and we still live here, including my own family. So locally mosque just makes sense. It means we can walk and not drive. The mosque will be conveniently located, right? Sustainable central location, right? This is a town centre project, and that will ease congestion, not add to it, because most of us will be driving. Sorry, most of us will be walking, right? The charity members, cha, the charity members who, who are behind these projects are not foreigners, and they are not illegal migrants. Just like many people have actually commented on the Facebook pages, right? Um, and they're not right-wing, right? They are, uh, born here, they were brought up here, they're educated here, they went to the grammar schools, they went to normal schools, they studied universities. Now they work professional fields, right? And some of us are in business as well, right? These people are giving backup to this very community and want to do, do this community more, want to give the community more. We're all asking for our safe, local place to pray and a chance to bring.
Thank you, Mister Hussain. That's very good. Thank you very much. Um, again, members, any points of clarification or questions? I see none. Um, any other members? Oh, Peter, uh, sorry, Mister Councillor.
Thank you, Chair. So just to reiterate what you said beforehand, do you actually drive to the actual mosque at the moment? So people will drive to the mosque, the new mosque?
Yeah, you can answer.
At this moment, because I live on Peacock Street, I have to drive all the way to St Hilda's because there's no way that I can walk from Peacock to St Hilda's. And also, I pick up quite few, a couple of old elderly people, not few, but a couple of elderly people. One of them is my father-in-law and, and, and uncle of mine, who are very, very elderly, seventy, seventy, seventy-five, seventy-six years old. Overma, and they won't be able to walk all the way to that places to do their prayers.
Councillor Scholar.
So living on Peacock Street, you are aware that it's quite narrow, and it's, you know, for cars to come down here, they start stopping and stuff like that. It will cause an issue for local residents. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. You can answer the question.
I can see your point, and I'm quite, I quite agree with you to a certain extent. But the way I'm looking at it, whether if it's a mosque, whether if it's a pub, or if it's a shop, or if it's a community, and a doctor's surgery, or whatever it is that it is going to be in the future, it will have the same issues. Doesn't matter whether if it's a doctor's surgery, or whether if it's a, uh, you know, anything, anything, it will have that effect. But we will try to, being a good citizen of the area, good civil, civilized people, we'll try to make it as easy as possible. That's all I can say.
Thank you, Mister Saint. I have not seen anybody else, so thank you for your comments and, um, opinions. That then moves us on to those against the application. And first speaker I have in front of me is Deepak Singh Bains. Um, would you like to come forward? Not here. Right, then can we move to second speaker, which is Darren Hilbert? I don't see, not here. So we'll move to the third speaker, which is Ektavine Tandy. If you'd like to take the space of a seat.
Uh, can I just point out that you are speaking as a local resident? You're guided by the same rules of the speaker, three minutes, guided by the lights and can take questions. But then cannot make any further comment in any further debate. Thank you.
Good evening all. My name is Ektavine, and I speak to you today as a longstanding resident of Peacock Street on behalf of my neighbours. Let me be clear, this is not about religion. If this were a proposal for a large community centre of any kind, religious or not, we would be raising these same objections. This is not about faith, this is about function and the unsuitability of Peacock Street. For those of you who do not know the area, it's made up of tightly-packed Victorian terrace houses with no driveways. Some are on Grove. We also have Zor Chapel, the Salvation Army, Hody Trinity, three pubs, the Sikh Godwara, the train station, town and prom within our little grid. The area is heaving. Road rage incidents, reckless driving and arguments are quite the norm. Parking is a daily battle with residents having to double park and receive fines. We have in the direct vicinity of this application, three disabled badge holders, my mother being one of them, and two disabled parking bays. The current informal agreement will not survive added pressure. Despite the application noting a limit of sixty-five worshippers, the application includes a youth centre, food bank, and wishes to encourage people from outside of the borough to visit. So it isn't about meeting local demand, it's about drawing people in. High-volume programmes will occur such as Ramadan, weddings and funerals, and events will happen with the lunar schedule, changing year to year. So there will be unavoidable disturbances at unsociable, unsociable hours such as four AM. The events also occur before and after public transport will run, and Peacock Street is not a main road. People will drive and park wherever they can, bringing noise, disruption and tension. The population of Gravesham, that is Muslim, as of twenty twenty-one, was said as three point one percent spread borough-wide. This is being justified by external demand. There are already two mosques, one of which is a four-minute drive or nine-minute walk away. A councillor from Maidstone, who has been seen urging ed, urging individuals to support the application, writing a template for people to send to the council, when they themselves probably have never set foot here or know of the strain residents are under from parking, rising HMOs and litter. Many of those two hundred supportive comments came from those who do not live there. Objections are coming from real residents. Residents supported the pub, they support housing, both are compatible and low-impact. It's not just about traffic. Before even use, the applicant has had total disregard for the street with their builders leaving wires hanging above, cement and paint all over the pavement and litter strewn across. It's a total lack of concern for those who literally paid to live there. Planning legislation and frameworks are useful, but this decision goes beyond box ticking. It's about nuance, context and lived experience. If this application is approved, the people who actually live on the street will carry the burden every single day. We respectfully ask that you listen to us. Thank you.
Thank you, Miss Tandy. Right, um, any questions or points of information from members of the panel? I see none. Any from any other members? No? Thank you very much. Well done. Right, thank you. Now, I won't open it to ward members because two of them are members of the committee. Um, I'm now offering any other comments, um, leader of a council? You have unlimited time, regrettably.
I, I mean, now I appreciate your final comment, um, and will endeavour to be brief for me. Um, I think this is actually a very difficult application to determine. Um, the reason why I say that is that I personally believe there is a need for at least another one or more mosques in Gracium. We have a community that's growing here, one that we have value in, and has brought a lot of good things to Gracium. Um, and have moved into Gracium and become part of Gracium in a way that, um, isn't that obvious in the growing numbers. And what I mean by that is, we have over three thousand now who are, um, of the Muslim faith. Um, and they deserve somewhere to worship together collectively. However, this isn't the location, in my opinion. I think it is too much in a tightly-packed residential area. Whilst I understand the, um, description of there only be four, five, ten, fifteen people at certain worship points during the day, um, I think an interesting commentary there when the application itself says there will be sixty-five. Um, and in practice, when you go to the other two mosques, there are substantially more than the number that are probably officially declared when they were first permitted. And in fact, we are, I think, I believe if I'm correct, we have technically one mosque, not two anyway. Um, the other one's an educational centre. So I think we need to be very careful when we look at the numbers. When you then consider the number here coming is only going to be sixty-five, when we've got potentially three thousand need a place of worship. when we've got potentially 3,000 in either place of worship. I think what we need to be doing is the community, working together with the Muslim community, the council and others, is find another location for a bigger mosque than this, that better serves the community. Not just the Muslim community, but the wider community as well. But this isn't the place. It's not the right building, it's not the right location. And the idea that people will be walking there, or if they don't, they'll be in the car park in Lord Street, is again an interesting concept when we look at the other two options that are available. That isn't how they work. Unfortunately, a lot of people do park on local roads and I give due regard to the management of those mosques who do their best to try and persuade people to park in other local areas away from the mosque. But there's a limit. When you're rushing to get into a prayer, sometimes it's too easy to park up nearby and get into the prayer. And I get that. It is important to be at that location for that prayer. But again, in this location is not right. And I think we need to balance the rightful need of the community, of the Muslim community, and their aspiration and desire with the need of the wider community and the location of where a mosque can and should be. And I go back to the point that this isn't the right location. The dependence and reliability of having the potential Lord Street as a parking venue in our own local plan is, as an argument, potentially suspect. It's been in our local plan for decades as a site to be redeveloped. So the redevelopment of that would take away that parking option. So if that happens, where will people then park? Now, hopefully, when I guess we develop, there will be some form of multi-storey car park built into it. But that potentially will take people further away from this location for parking. And I think we need to look at the bigger picture. And that bigger picture says to me, if I was a voting member of the committee, unfortunately, on this particular site, refusal is the way forward. But it doesn't, for me, mean that we have to give up the aspiration of the council to try and work with the community to find a better, bigger location for a mosque in Gravesham, because one is definitely needed. If you look at the growth of the Sikh community here, we went from Brandon Street to then Clarence Place to the new Godwara, which we all celebrate. It's a marvellous addition to this borough. We need to think along the same journey path for the Muslim community. It's the right thing to do and we need to do it, but not here. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Burn. I now offer comments from other councillors and we've had one that's not here today.
Thank you, Chair. So with the Chair's agreement, I'm going to read a statement out on behalf of Councillor Aslam, who's not able to attend today. And it goes, Dear Chair and members of the planning committee, I regret I cannot be present at this meeting but I write in full support of the application for a change of use to a place of worship. This application must be considered in light of national and local planning policy. The MPPF emphasises the importance of enabling communities to meet their day-to-day needs, including those, including through access to places of worship. Paragraphs ninety-two and ninety-three stress that planning decisions should support healthy, inclusive and safe spaces by enabling social interaction and by providing community facilities to meet local needs. Refusing or unduly restricting this application would run counter to the spirit of these planning objectives. Additionally, the council must take into account its legal duty under the Equality Act 2010, which requires public bodies to eliminate discrimination, advance equality of opportunity and foster good relations between different groups. Supporting this application helps the councillors fulfil that duty, affirming its commitment to a fair and inclusive borough. The application also engages Article Nine of the Human Rights Act 1998, which protects the right to freedom of thought, conscience and religion, including the right to manifest religion through worship. This must be considered carefully and balanced fairly against other planning considerations. The proposed use is peaceful, respectful and essential to enabling local residents to practise their faith. The Muslim community, like many others in Gravesend, has grown significantly in recent years. This demographic reality must be acknowledged as part of inclusive planning. The applicant has demonstrated a clear and unmet need and officers have confirmed the proposal is appropriate for the location. The building is modest in scale with internal space that prevents overcrowding by design. The applicant has shown consideration for neighbouring residents and has sought to engage positively with the council. It is also worth remembering that the site was previously a public house, a use which historically generated far more potential for noise, loitering and antisocial behaviour, particularly during late hours and weekends. In contrast, the proposed use as a place of worship is modest, respectful and typically involves activity limited to short durations during prayer times. Members should consider this history when assessing the likely impact on the surrounding area. The proposed conditions include a two-year limit, risk being disproportionate, temporary permissions by their nature create uncertainty and place communities under continual scrutiny. They also risk applying the double standard as the community and religious spaces in the borough are not subjected to the same restrictions. Planning conditions must be applied consistently and fairly. Moreover, significant investment of time, finances and relationship building will go into transforming and maintaining the site for community benefit. So a temporary permission undermines the entire essence of that usage, creating a lingering fear that after two years it could all be revoked. With devolution and broader changes in governance on the horizon, this uncertainty is even more concerning. People's lives, welfare and religious continuity will be directly affected. Concerns about parking and attendance levels should be addressed through cooperation and education, not disproportionate planning constraints. Furthermore, the surrounding area, including Peacock Street, Edward Street, St Andrews Gardens, Wellington Street and the Grove, has a high density of Muslim residents who are almost certain to walk to the premises. This fact significantly reduces any realistic concerns over traffic and parking pressures. The community has made clear its commitment to maintaining positive neighbourly relations and this is a core value of Islamic teaching. Many mosques across the country run open-door events, neighbour days and awareness programmes. There is no reason why this site cannot do the same in partnership with the council. The vast majority of Muslims follow a peaceful religion rooted in compassion, service and civic duty. However, the community has too often been subject to unfair prejudice and discrimination. It has been an uphill struggle to portray the true values of the faith, which includes supporting food banks, NHS services and charitable work through the borough. This application is an opportunity for the council to stand for this fairness and inclusion. Rather than impose rigid conditions, the council could consider regular review meetings involving planning officers, councillors and community representatives. This would allow any concerns to be addressed constructively and cooperatively. We must work together rather than impose limits that feel unnecessary or excessive. The proposal is community-led, arising from genuine grassroots needs. It supports resilient social integration, the principle of localism, all of which are promoted in planning policy. I strongly urge the committee to grant permanent permission with reasonable safeguards rather than time-limited or of the restrictions conditions. I put my faith in the sound judgment of the members of the planning committee to make a fair and balanced decision. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Any other members of the council wanting to comment, other than members of the panel? Okay, members of the committee, would anybody like to give a point of view? Councillor Scholar.
Thank you, Chair. Pretty much echo the leader's opinions on this one. At the end of the day, we do need a mosque. The community is growing bigger and bigger. It's tremendous. It's getting bigger. And I think this is just going to be a sticking plaster to actually help the building. As Tony said, the local plan says that something might happen with Parrot Street, so then you'd have the same issue where you wouldn't be able to park. Would love to work very closely with you to actually find a suitable place to build a mosque. But because of the area where it is with residential area so built up, I really can't sort of support this at the moment. Sorry. Thank you.
Shazad, do you want to comment?
Thank you, Chair. Just to clarify a number of points that have just been said. Parrot Street car park isn't allocated within the local plan for any particular use. It's just a car park, existing local plan that is. So you can't take anything into account with regards to Parrot Street apart from the fact that it's a car park. In terms of whether or not the additional provision might be forthcoming for a mosque elsewhere at any moment in time, that can't be taken into account either. I'm afraid you need to make a decision on the application before you and just take it onto account on its merits in relation to the development plan and material considerations. Thank you, Chair.
Right, Councillor Tandy.
Thank you, Chair. I agree with the leader and there is a need for mosque, but this is not the right location. I can share with you something from my experience. When we had a Godwara at Clarence Place, in the middle of the service, every day, right and due to come, that they got a problem with the car parking and we used to have a heated argument with them. That was nearly every day, so. Faith, religious is great harmony, but most of the time there was heated argument with them. And that's one of the reasons why I'm saying, yeah, there is a need for mosque, but this is not the right place for that at this time. Thank you.
Right, I'm looking around, Councillor, any?
Thank you, Chair. I love that we're providing opportunities for worship to our local communities. I'm also pleased that historic building is being preserved rather than falling into a state of disrepair. Like some others though, I'm concerned about whether this is in the right place, I'm afraid. As a neighbour, I would be extremely upset to be constantly woken up at eleven-thirty as people are leaving or four-thirty again as people are arriving. Different from a pub where they would be going late at night, but you wouldn't get the same disturbance again in the morning. By disturbance, it's not necessarily people talking, but you just, you just know when someone's coming and going from a house nearby or a dwelling nearby, you just know. It would wake me up all the time. So to be a local neighbour there, I think I'd be quite upset. And I know that, you know, the community would not like to cause upset to others. So it concerns me hugely and it makes me think that perhaps this should be refused on the basis of noise, not being in the right location. Paragraph one-eight-five of the MPPF states that planning policies and decisions should ensure the new development is appropriate for its location. It explicitly includes noise. And then also just about, obviously, Councillor Banga's excellent point earlier about safety with the congestion for children being dropped off just adds to that narrative of, is it in the right place? And sadly, I'm not sure it is, as much as I would love to support it. And that's sad not just for the local community in that respect, but also, you know, the Peacock itself. If a viable use is not found, many pubs we see just fall into a state of disrepair. So that would be a sad day as well. So, and, you know, it could well have a sad fate in that respect. So I'm disappointed. I'm not sure I can support this, I'm afraid. Yeah, thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Oh, Councillor Jessel.
Thank you, Chair. Can I start by thanking the community for coming here? You know, we're not, we're not at odds with this application in terms of what the use is. And I think it's encouraging, you know, that you have got a use. And, you know, the Muslim community do play a very big role in what Gravesham is quite a diverse and probably one of the most diverse communities in Kent. The issues I have, you know, and unusually, I agree with the leader. But, you know, the issue is about, is this the right location? And, you know, go back to that figure which was quoted by your first speaker, about 600 Muslim people living within the area. I know you have people outside on the streets, you know, not the street but outside the mosque, the first original mosque. The question is, I don't think we've got a real grasp of the number of people. And if this becomes the mosque of choice for people in that area, there is no street space for people to go. And if that is the closest location, we will probably see an influx of people. I don't think also the use in terms of, you know, we've said, which is a great thing, you know, if you've got 30 children that are going and playing a part there, the dropping and coming and going of those, the roads are blocked already on Peacock Street. I mean, I was elected in 2007 for what was Central Ward and I remember the bulk of casework on a day-to-day basis were residents complaining about the parking situation and those were them parking, going using the train station in those days, et cetera, et cetera. From experience, you know, historically, this has always been a bit of a gridlocked area. And again, you know, with the residential properties there, we need to really make sure that, you know, we're also looking after the residents. But I guess my issue is, again, just about the location, not about the use or the value of what the Muslim community bring to Gravesham. It's simply that I just don't think that area and that particular building can house the large numbers. And I don't think we've got an accurate, actual steer on the numbers. So from that perspective, I will struggle to support this application.
Thank you, Councillor. Any other members of the committee? I see none. Would somebody like to ask for a question is put? Yes, thank you, Councillor. I'll second that. So what we have in front of us is a recommendation, as you can see, which is to grant a temporary planning permission subject to conditions set out within this report and to delegate authority to the head of planning to make any necessary modifications, deletion or addition. Right, I will put Matt to vote. Those in favour of that recommendation? I see nobody. Those opposed to recommendation, please indicate. Or that proposal has been, recommendation has been rejected? Which then brings us on to grounds. Shazad?
So I was going to suggest that maybe the committee delegate the decision to me for refusal and the grounds that I've picked up during the debate related to noise and highway safety.
Anything else to be added? Parking issues maybe?
If you want parking added, I can add that in, but I can't see a planning reason for safeguarding.
Right. Okay, so we delegate over to the head of planning in consultation with myself. We will then find the grounds for refusal of this planning recommendation. Yes, vote on that, that it is delegated to the head of planning in consultation with the Chair and Vice-Chair to find the grounds for refusal. Thank you. I see that as unanimous. Thank you for that. Right, can I thank everybody who's participated? I would suggest we have a five-minute comfort break to allow those people who want to escape to do so.
This slide shows the proposed site wide elevations from Ordance Road and the Milton Place Junction. This slide shows the proposed site wide elevations from Milton Place. Here you can see the apartment block elevations. The apartment block would be up to four stories with a staggered height and would successfully address the corner. It has a contemporary design with features which reflect the historic setting. The dwellings within the development are a mix of detached and semi-detached units varying between two and three stories in height. They would all have similar features to create continuity, matching materiality, creating continuity across the site. Subject to resolution of planning committee, there are conditions recommended to ensure details relating to the materials, windows, doors are submitted to and approved. The different layer of the dwellings is shown on the site layout above. The layout creates frontages onto Ordance Road and onto the open space, which will provide natural surveillance. The proposal will deliver seventy six new dwellings within the borough and will provide a mix of units of different occupancy numbers can contribute into the housing mix consisting of sixty one apartments and fifteen houses. The allocation of the apartments will be managed by GBC Housing and will be subject to GBC Housing's allocation policy. Thirty percent of the units will be affordable housing and social rent, which equates to twenty three units. The remaining thirty eight units will be affordable housing, subject to Homes England funding. The development will safeguard the amenity with the proposed apartment units exceeding the minimum national space standards. The proposed houses are also appropriately sized. In terms of neighbouring properties, the redesign of the apartment block safeguards neighbour amenity through privacy, light, outlook and sense of enclosure and the orientation and separation distances are acceptable. As touched on the previous slide, the proposed apartment building has been redesigned to ensure that the privacy and amenity of properties on Milton Place are safeguarded. The height of the block on Milton Place has been reduced and the roof terrace removed in the interest of safeguarding amenity. The full assessment of this is within the report. The application will result in a reduction of parking from one hundred and forty eight to eighty four spaces on the existing public surface car park with three spaces being lost on Ordance Road. There is no objection to this reduction in parking spaces from Parking Services. The development will create a new vehicle access point onto Milton Place with internal road network serving residential units. As shown on the slide, the scheme does benefit from and retain a provision of parking, most notably nineteen spaces for the dwellings and eighty four spaces in Milton Place Car Park. There is no objection from KCC highways to the parking provision or access, subject to conditions set out in the committee report. Turning to open space, the proposal does result in the extent of open space being reduced, but the remaining space would be improved in qualitative terms. The skate park will be retained and in a new informal boulder log play area is proposed with linear garden spaces. There is improved permeability and access for pedestrians throughout the site. This will provide an opportunity to enhance the wellbeing of both new and existing residents, as well as improve the safety through natural surveillance of the open space and car park. The site is located in the Grey's End Riverside Conservation Area and adjacent to the Milton Place Conservation Area, as well as adjacent to scheduled ancient monument and numerous listed buildings. The proposed development will call less than substantial harm to heritage assets, new Tappanfoort Conservation Area and adjacent listed buildings. This less than substantial harm is outweighed by public benefits listed on this slide, including the creation of new homes. There is no objection from Historic England or GBC Conservation, subject to conditions. The LPA will seek further details of elevational treatment of the apartment block and external materials across the development to further reduce impact. The site is within the Thames Estuary Marshes SPA and the SAMs payment shown on the slide will be secured through the section one O six agreement. Biodiversity improvements will be secured by planning conditions. This slide summarizes the planning obligations requested, which total approximately three hundred and fifty thousand pounds and include twenty three affordable units, which is thirty percent, and will be secured through a section one O six agreement. As set out in the report, the Lewis property type was undersized. Since the report was published, this property type has been amended to make it policy compliant. As such, the officer recommendation has been amended, removing this matter. The recommendation to planning committee is for the application to be delegated to the head of planning to grant permission, subject to finalizing conditions and the completion of the section one O six agreement. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, members of the committee, any questions, information, clarification? Um, then.
Uh, can I just have clarification on the landscaping, uh, please? If we can have the picture, um, back up um, on on that one, uh, please. And clarification on the four accessible car parking, uh, there. Will that be the exit for the disabled parking? Will that be on the side of going down to the Gordon Gardens, please?
Sorry Chair, um, we'll need to look at that and respond to that. Um, will that plan and respond to that as ASAP? Thank you.
Thank you. Do you want to come back?
Yeah, and the landscaping, um, some of the trees are existing, aren't they? Just are you going to put some more in uh, from the on the little road down to Gordon Gardens there? And there's going to be, how high the tree is going to be along Milton Place?
Um, so I can assist with the landscaping question quite easily. Um, the what's being shown is indicative at this stage and there'll be a landscaping condition securing um, further details which would effectively deal with matters such as um the height of trees, type of trees, um, and all that information in due course.
Uh, thank you Chair, just another one on car parking. Um, there's going to be seventy four left, I think, for the original car park. Is there going to be any provisions actually in the site uh, for car parking for actual residents of the properties there, please?
Thank you Chair. So the ambition is that the residential properties, the dwelling houses have their own um parking. Um, that's so it's eighty four spaces in at Milton Place Car Park. And then you've got the nineteen spaces for the dwelling houses. Um, and you've got a separate eight spaces for the independent assisted living um accommodation, which is effectively the apartments. Thank you Chair.
Hi, it's Gary. Uh, thank you Chair. One of my main concerns is this is right next to the Prom Park. And we have had in the past flooded in that area. So I would like to ask, uh, has provision been made to ensure that the drainage is up to date? Ensure that these houses that we like to see will not suffer future flooding. Now we're actually going to build on land itself. Now we're actually going to build on land itself, which would be a natural soak. So I'll take that away. So would that encourage more flooding in future? Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Chair. So from the outset, the applicant has worked constructively with the KCC, who Sustainable Urban Drainage, in terms of sustainable urban drainage. And to the east of the car park, there's an area there that includes a SUD. That SUD is designed to meet the requirements of this development. And it, and the applicant has more than satisfactorily demonstrated to KCC that the SUD will work and they're content with what's being posed. It's been designed in consultation with them, not only through the application stage itself, but actually back in the app stage. There was active engagement between the applicant and KCC to address that matter. And it's been in the forefront of the applicant's mind when they've designed the scheme overall.
Thank you. councillor Wardle?
Thank you, Chair. Gary's just asked the question I was going to ask, but I believe it was last year or the year before, the Thames had exceptionally high tide and flooded that whole area. I'd like to know if there's any mitigation being made to prevent this in future.
Thank you, Chair. So the mitigation is the SUD. There's been no requirement from the environmental agency or KCC for any kind of extreme flood event measures in themselves with relation to this site. So we're content that this site won't get flooded as a result of the development that's being proposed.
Thank you. councillor Scolard?
Thank you, Chair. We're losing our playing field. Will there be any contributions towards that and where will the contributions be going to? Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. As set out in the report and as, I think it was in one of the final slides, there's a hundred and fifty nine thousand poundish contribution being made to leisure services. And that will go towards Cascades in reality, with immediate improvements being made to the local area to address the loss of the open space. So if you looked at the previous image in terms of the open space and skate park, as you can see, there's improvements being made to increase this utility in comparison to what's currently there. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Any?
Thank you. And I still see that we're retaining the skateboard park. I do hope that will never go because it is well used. And it would be a shame if we take that leisure park away from this scheme. Thank you.
Just to confirm two things, the skate park stays, if anything, to safeguard its future. It's being sensitively landscaped within the proposed setting to make sure there's no kind of antisocial behaviour issues or anything along those lines. And in addition to that, the introduction of residential development, if anything, will provide additional overlooking to a certain degree and a greater sense of safety because of the actives of evidence that will then occur in that, in that area. And just to go back to your previous comment in terms of parking, I'm just looking at the parking layout in the transport assessment, councillor Milner. And the four spaces aren't currently identified, so that'll be a matter that's dealt with under condition in due course. Thank you.
Thank you. And looking at any other councillors? Shane, Mokkikot?
Thank you very much, Chair. Thank councillors Scolard and Milner for raising a couple of points. I think the loss of a playing field, it's good that you've clarified that'll be reprovided elsewhere effectively. And councillor Milner raised about the skateboard park. My clarification question is, given the skateboard park is there first and it is being retained, how can we make sure that it doesn't become a subjective constant complaint? I suppose because the skateboard park was there first, the young people, whether predominantly use it, I hasten to add, were there first and given the proposed demographic and the need to design that crime as detailed in the report, Chair, how can we make sure that effectively the skateboard users, of which there are many, don't become effectively put upon because we've decided that this is some place to, to put residential units? And further clarification, Chair, about given the previous application about mosque and the parking near the area there and the loss of car parking spaces, how in the wider borough context of our parking offer, do you think, does the, do the officers think that the proposal, which is seen to be acceptable here, is acceptable given the previous conversations we've just had about the mosque?
Thank you, Chair. To deal with the last point first, if I may, with regards to parking, we've obviously consulted Parking Services, who manage this car park, along with other council owned car parks around the town centre. They've advised that there's sufficient capacity within the system for this car park to reduce in scale, which is why the, the reduction is being proposed and shown. And so they are supportive of that. And, and we've taken the evidence based viewpoint into account in that context. With regards to the point around how do we effectively preserve the ability of the skate park users to utilise that space without the existing, sorry, without the new residents complaining? Whilst there is nothing that we can do to stop any individual complaining or making vexatious complaints in future, the scheme has been designed and orientated in a way that the residents, especially those in the apartment blocks, are impacted by users of the skate park and the landscaping etcetera between the dwellings and the skate park softens the noise and visual intrusion in that respect as well. So one wouldn't expect a significant amount of complaints arising from those particular location. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. I've seen councillor, then councillor Elliot.
Just a question on the landscaping. I'm happy with the scheme. But when I saw the drafts, I wasn't happy with it then and still not happy now with the bizarre little hedging strips that are going up by the skate park. I can see why you're trying to mask the skateboard park, which needs to be retained. But I just see that as a maintenance nightmare and a danger with wire, all those lengths and being ripped open. How long does this need to be maintained for? Is there a planning condition attached to it? Because I, I think it might look pretty on a plan, it might look pretty for an architect, but in reality, it's, it's going to be very, very difficult to maintain.
Who wants to come in?
Thank you, Chair. I think that's one of the issues that would be addressed via the landscape condition in reality. I appreciate that it's a council maintained park at this moment in time. And the expectation is that components of the site are returned back to the council once the development is complete. So that element will need to be clarified and secured by the Section 106 or, or conditions. So we can take that point on board. And as part of the discussions around the Section 106, we can make sure that's covered. And with regards to the landscaping, the landscaping condition can ensure that any kind of proposals there in terms of detail are considered further before a decision is finalized.
Thank you. councillor Elliot?
Thank you, Chair. Just to echo what councillor Mokkikot said just now about the, the concerns about the, we wouldn't want people using that skate park to be constantly coming under attention for just noise disturbances and what have you. That, you know, they were there first and quite rightly, you know, just don't have too many places to go, so. You know, like somebody moving next to a pub, for example, as could often happen, then to complain that the pubs open late at night, you know, surprise, surprise. Also, I, I just wanted to pick up on something that's just been said regards to the capacity of the car park. And I'm not sure, you, you've got the figures you've got, which of course is what we've got to go by, but I would question. And someone said that, I can't remember the authority or who it was that said the capacity could be reduced based on the figures they've got. When I've got a regular car, I've got a Vosso Sophia, when I go into that car park, the vicious high teeth on the entrance to that car park mean that any time I've gone into it, I catch the underside of my car every single time. So it makes me not want to use the car park. And I wonder how many other residents wanting to use that car park have avoided the car park because of those teeth? And therefore the results are that the numbers, whoever's done, got these figures are completely skewed. Thank you.
Thank you. If you want to comment on that?
Thank you, Chair. Unfortunately, I can't comment on that. I'm basing, basing the information that I'm providing on the evidence that the applicant has submitted and the evidence that's been reviewed by Parking Services colleagues. Today, nobody's raised that particular concern to me as part of the applications, so that's news to me.
And councillor Milner?
Thank you, Chair, just two little things. I'm not a great lover of hedges around children's play areas because it can harbour all sorts of untoward people where youngsters are. So that's just one observation that I've got. And the play equipment, you said the 106 agreement, play equipment. Would there be sufficient play equipment being put in for disabled children? Like the people, children in wheelchairs, there is a special units that you can put in. I would like that to be thought about as well. And I'm sure the Gravestown Access Group could help you on that.
Thank you, Chair. So with regards to the landscaping, there, there is a condition proposed and that will deal with the specific issues in terms of the landscaping and the hedges etcetera. So obviously in future, when the details are submitted, those can be considered in further detail. And should, you know, planning committee members be minded, that can obviously be brought to planning committee for determination at that moment in time. In terms of play equipment, there's some informal play space being created through the boulders and logs. But there's no specific children's play areas being created in terms of what you're proposing. The primary reason for that would be that there are existing locations within that wider open space for such provision. So it's not shown currently on these plans in terms of specific play equipment. So there'll be some informal areas that are created through appropriate landscaping. But there isn't that kind of traditional play equipment that I think you're alluding to that's being posed within the scheme itself.
councillor Milner?
That's quite upsetting really to, to hear that because there's nothing more upsetting than perhaps a family with three children and one in a wheelchair and they cannot participate on play equipment with their siblings. So perhaps we could perhaps look at that a bit further.
Thank you, councillor. councillor Jasson?
Sorry, can I ask councillor Milner a question? I didn't understand what you meant about these hedges. Didn't get the point about untoward.
No, can we, can we follow up on that and in the general discussion with the officers? Shall we move on to the speakers for the application? I've got Chloe Houston. Thank you. You understand the procedure?
Good evening and thank you for providing me the opportunity to speak. The application is the first development to be brought forward by Gravestown Community Investment Partnership, also known as GCP. A fifty fifty partnership between Gravestown Borough Council and Hill. Hill is an award winning privately owned house builder with a strong track record of delivering high quality and sustainable places to live. Hill, together with the council, will create meaningful, high quality places in Gravestown for all, prioritising housing delivery and social value to address the council's current housing shortfall. The site is in a sustainable location and is currently underused. The proposal is to deliver high quality homes and open spaces that are reflective of the town location and are sensitive to its immediate surroundings in the conservation area and proximity to open spaces and the new tavern fort. The proposals accord with the development plan and significantly exceed in sustainability policy requirement, achieving a sixty percent carbon reduction. Moreover, the proposals deliver an eighteen percent biodiversity net gain. We will deliver eighty percent affordable housing through the provision of sixty one homes within the apartment building. Thirty percent of these homes will be secured through a Section 106 agreement. The additional fifty percent above policy will be secured utilising Homes England grant funding. This is a significant benefit to the scheme and the people of Gravestown who are in need of quality affordable homes fit for purpose. The skate park is being retained on site and is complemented by high quality usable open space that encourages play and interaction. The proposals are considered to respect the scale, massing and architectural design relative to their surroundings. And the local authority confirmed that there is no overlooking caused by the proposals. There are no objections from any statutory consultees relating to these proposals, including Historic England, the Highways Authority, the Flood Authority, Natural England and the Environment Agency. The Section 106 agreement will secure financial contributions towards local infrastructure, including a hundred and fifty nine thousand pound contribution towards public open space provision off site. To conclude, this application represents an ambitious, well designed proposal, including eighty percent affordable housing, delivering on both the council's and GCP's objectives to provide high quality, sustainable homes that reflect the character of Gravestown Town Centre. The proposal is fully compliant with policy and has the support of technical consultees and delivers clear social, economic and environmental benefits. We hope that members are able to positively determine the application in accordance with your officers' recommendation for approval. Thank you for your time and for your consideration.
Thank you. Members of the committee, any questions? Requests? No? I've seen any other members? No? Thank you very much. Thank you for your input. Right, that brings us on to Paul White speaking. Senior Development Manager, GBC.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, committee. My name is Paul White and I'm the Senior Development Manager at Gravestown Borough Council. I'm also very pleased to be given the opportunity to speak on behalf of the council this evening. The proposed, proposed block of sixty one one bedroom, affordable rented council flats for over fifty fives independent living represents an opportunity to provide good quality, adaptable, energy efficient and affordable accommodation for a section of the community for which, according to the council's housing solution team, there are currently a hundred and forty eight households on the council's housing register in need. So there is a significant need which I cannot emphasise enough. And with an aging population, the need for this type of housing will only increase. I will point out that the need is very much for one bedroom flats and there is much less need for larger homes for people that would qualify for an extra bedroom in terms of applicants meeting the required assessment criteria. Ie, there is much less demand for main applicants with dependent children for the age group concerned. Hence, one bedroom flats most closely meet the council's need. The application will reduce the size of the Milton Place and Ordance Road car parks, but the redesign has been informed by parking surveys and from the automated number plate recognition entry data in partnership with the local authority's parking team and conclude that the car park is underutilised. Sufficient capacity will, sufficient capacity has been retained within the car park, car parks, including contingency allowance for peak periods. Gravestown's parking team had no objections to this proposal. Importantly, the proposed accommodation is in the town centre with easy access to all its amenities and therefore particularly appropriate, appropriate for this particular needs group. It would significantly improve the council's independent living offering and modernise the housing portfolio in the local area. And the context of the proposals demonstrates the council's aspirations for and commitment to the regeneration of the town centre. the regeneration of the town centre. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions or comments, requests? No, I've seen nobody. Thank you very much. So we'll now move to against the application. I've got Mr Turoni.
I think you probably understand how the system works by now. Yeah, thank you.
Hi there. I'm dismayed and quite frankly upset by what I've heard today. I can't think of any reason why you would choose this location as a prime location for the age group and the demographic you're talking about when there's a derelict building sitting right beside the hospital down at the end of town, just sitting there that's been doing absolutely nothing for years. Now, does that not seem like the prime location to put an aging demographic beside healthcare facilities? It seems like an ideal location to me. Let's not mention that on that sheet, no one has bothered to mention the location of the school across Ordinance Road. Where are those cars going to park? Where are people going to pick up their kids and children? Are they going to park in those driveways of those users? Are they going to walk across that car park on the other side? What about the the number plate recognition system you have seen that is underutilised? Are you going to pay £2.70 an hour to go there to pick up your kids every day? Yourself councillor was talking about underutilised buildings. I've just pointed one out to you. I'm quite frankly dismayed at that. Not only the car parking spaces beside that skate park that you're pointing out as well. Where are they going? How are people going to park there and stay with their kids? Look after them. They're going to have to park in that car park opposite, aren't they? Not to mention the fairground and attractions that you have there and all the amenities that are there throughout the year as well. Are you going to turn around to your family and kids and say, sorry, they ain't there because I decided to build 60, 60, 70 new houses there? Are you going to tell your kids that? Are you? Are you? I wouldn't want to tell my kids that. Are you going to put them further deep into that park or you're going to crush that area even more and ruin that landscape? What about the area that's already there, that's bringing that open space and open field? How are people going to get their HEVs in there with the rights for that particular area? Now, I am quite frankly appalled and dismayed by the lack of any of this being mentioned by anyone here today. Instead, we're here talking about hedges. We're here talking about, you know, bumps and parking spaces, which I agree are valid points, but I think there are much more bigger issues here that have not been discussed. And I quite find that appalling. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Um. Members of the committee, any questions? No, thank you for your contribution. Right, if we could now move to the second person against the application, Mr Glenn White.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you today. Um. I want to make it clear that we don't oppose development of the area per se, but what we do oppose is this development. Uh. Apparently, we look at an overgrown space in a car park, so we'd love to see some development. And I should say, I'm one of the residents of Milton Place. Um. But it's these these plans that we object to. We think that uh this this plan should be resubmitted and reconditioned uh reconsidered because it has lots of flaws. So firstly, the height of the plan. Um. You're planning to put five-story buildings next to three-story buildings in a conservation area. Quite frankly, it's ridiculous. The placing of those five-story buildings on Milton Place, when there's literally an access road to a car park they could go on, it doesn't make any sense. Um. It's going to despite the so-called impact study, which, by the way, we have not been given access to. The light levels in Milton Place are just going to be destroyed, especially for those people that live in the ground floor flats and the ground floor accommodation in Milton Place. They are going to get no light. Those houses are east-facing, so literally for half the day, they are not going to see any light at all. Um. It's kind of disgusting, actually. Uh. It also, to some degree, will um stop any plans that we might have to put sort of solar panels on these houses if we chose to. But that's another point. Um. Many things have been said about um the design of these being sort of in keeping with the Gravesend aesthetic and that they fit the local area. Um. I question that completely. I have no idea why these fit the local area. Um. We are held in a conservation area to having matching brick, sash windows, cream facades, green ironwork. Um. None of these are in this plan at all. This is going to be an eyesore in that area and especially given the area that it's in. Parking has been a big problem and been mentioned, say, many times. Uh. No one has mentioned that the fact that Milton Place will lose its on-street parking. So the residents that park there will no longer have parking spaces that they can use. Now, there are driveways for some of those residents, but not all of them. So where are they going to park their cars? Um. I think that the fact that the entrance to the car park is being moved into Milton Place from Ordinance Road is also going to create a really bad problem, similar problem to one you were talking about earlier. And I completely agree with the councillor about the access to the car park. I've used it myself. Same thing happens. Um. Uh. I feel like there's lots of things that have been brought up in this consultation that have and lots of things on the plan that are very misleading. Um. The the trees that don't exist currently, they're just going to magically be planted, that will block things off. I just don't see how that's going to happen. Um. I really do ask you to consider carefully this specific plan, all of the things that have been mentioned. And I I yeah, I apologise. Can I make one very, very quick point? Okay.
Colleagues, uh on the committee, any? The third speaker against is Patricia Sigot. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. So first of all, we didn't have this as residents, which is concerning. I'm gravely concerned about proposals as it is and are strongly urged the committee to refuse this application in its current form. I'm shocked as it seems that the council has pretty much already decided on this. There seems to be observations around small details and we're not looking at the bigger picture here. And most importantly, no one is thinking about the existing residents and the impact this will have on them. I too live in Milton Place and my life will definitely change after this, if it goes ahead, as it is. Like my neighbour Glenn, I very much contest how the plan is. Nobody's contesting the need for housing. Uh. So the proposal suggested four-to-five story block would be built by the Ordinance Road corner. Where is the contextual sensitivity required by the Local Plan Call Strategy Policy CS20, which mandates that development in a conservation area must be must reinforce local character and preserve its historic townscape pattern? As remarked by Historic England's good practice advice, all proposals near conservation area must include a clear and illustrated assessment of the setting, visual impact and cumulative effect. The absence of a 3D model offering a realistic depiction of the volumetric scale of the proposed construction and whether it is indeed compatible with the nearby conservation area is a concern. There are many other things that I'd like to mention, probably there won't be time for it. But I also want to raise um great concerns about the fact that I don't know if it's a proper health impact assessment that's being completed. Because um this is going to cause a lot of distress to current residents. We're going to lose light, privacy. We won't have mirror windows. They're going to see straight through our home and, like Glenn said, the trees won't cover for it. Um. There will be unbearable levels of noise and air pollution during construction. Are these factors being um considered? Have they been considered? And also, finally, uh rediverting the traffic of these many flats along a tiny road will cause traffic congestion. Has a traffic impact assessment been carried out? How do you think this is going to work? It's barely leading capacity for the current people. Thank you for listening.
Uh. Thank you, Miss Sigot. Um. Any questions or comments? No. Thank you very much for your contribution. Um. Right, that then means we move on. Sorry, if there's any other comments or speakers, anybody wanting to comment? Right, um shall we now discuss the um proposal? Anybody wishing to make any comment? I see nobody. Oh, sorry. Um. Councillor.
Thank you, Chair. Um. I've got I've got some concerns, to be honest. Um. Lots of more green space in the borough. Um. We're moving the entrance to that car park to um away from Ordinance Road, which means that when you think of the traffic coming out of there, it's got to go fit back into the town centre again, which causes more congestion in the town centre, um which seems like a bit of an idiotic thing to be doing. The lack of car parking spaces and the capacity of which the numbers are skewed by the fact that we've put teeth into that car park, meaning that people can't even park there. Um. So Foringrave Town has got even less chance to 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 help our town centre. Um. You've got, as the gentleman said earlier, the the issue with parents, the impact of the local school not being able to drop their kids off as they were before. The the homes in the existing conservation area are being held to certain standards, but we're not applying those here, which to me is just taking the mick out of local residents. Um. I don't understand the thinking. Um. The design itself, it's dominating the area when surely you would think you would you would pay homage to the existing historic buildings that are there. You've got some beautiful buildings along that road. And we're sticking this finger, we're dominating the area and all those around it with this huge, huge development, which the location itself, I think, given the right design, it could it could contribute to the local area. It could look lovely. Um. To be honest, as a design, I think it looks awful. Um. Yeah, everything considered. I'm struggling to see how I can put my name to something with with all of those things considered. How 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 I could put my name to to that as an application and and to approve that, I'm afraid. Thank you, Chair.
Zad, do you want to comment on this?
Thank you, Chair. So um as it's been alluded to earlier um this evening, uh and I'll just go through the points that have been raised, the loss of green space. Um. It's acknowledged that there's a loss of green space, but um that's allowed for in policy policy where you've got a loss of the amount, but the quality is improved and reprovision made elsewhere. And there's a financial contribution towards that. Um. The moving of the car park entrance, um that's been um thoroughly discussed with KCC Highways, who are the Highways Authority, um and they're comfortable uh with the changes to the car park. And that includes the loss of parking. That's also been addressed with KCC Highways as well as Parking Services internally um at GBC. Um. Loss of school parking, uh again, that's not a matter of concern to KCC Highways either. Um. They're satisfied with the provision that's being made. Um. And finally, in terms of um the comment that's made um with regards to holding existing residents to a higher standard, I'm sure the applicant would advocate them potentially holding them to a higher standard, uh given the discussions that we've had. Um. And the reality is, um, you know, so that we can secure additional improvements to the facades, for example. You will have seen um in the presentation and within the report, that that factor is conditioned so that further work can be done on that specific detail. With regards to the wider scale of the proposal um and its massing, et cetera, that's um gone through extensive um discussions, not only through pre-app with officers here, um but through uh heritage experts in in the sense of our conservation architect um as well as Homes England. Um. So that's been informed via those discussions and refined um to the point that it's reached at this stage and it actually reflects the historic nature of the site and the fact that there used to be a church on the corner. So the scale um of what's being proposed has been informed um through an iteration of reviewing the historic nature of the site um to inform what's currently there. So I I I I hear the comment that's being made, but I disagree. Um. And I believe that it's been adequately addressed through the committee report and through the information and the work undertaken by the applicant. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Councillor Milner.
Um. Thank you, Chair. Uh. Yeah, so I'm just going to say that I'm all in favour of this. It's exciting for the borough and I think it's a good um thing that we are actually providing homes uh for people in like assisted living um where you are more compact and you are looked after. And then again, you've got houses for people with children. Um. And the borough does need more homes and not everyone's going to have a car. Um. So uh there is, it is quite near the bus route, just at the top of the the road, at the bottom of uh Milton Road. And it will encourage people to actually come into the town and explore what we have in the town. Um. And perhaps have a cup of coffee, do their shopping, meet with their friends. So I think this is an excellent idea and um I'm looking forward to it.
Thank you. Any further comments from members of committee or um councillor Burden?
Thank you. Um. Just a point before I go into the main item itself. Um. Can I point out on page 74 of the report? Um. Item uh 5.2.8, it refers to no comments from ward councillors received. Now, whilst that may technically be correct, um I think it should be noted that the ward councillors in question are members of this committee. And certainly, it's my view that members shouldn't express an opinion on a planning application, particularly if they're going to be a voting member of this committee, either for or against. And that's the guidance we have from officers, so we shouldn't be doing that. Um. So to actually note the ward members made no comment isn't particularly helpful when the advice from officers themselves is they shouldn't make a comment if you're going to be on a planning committee. You can't you can't face both ways. Um. So I think that need to be thought about for further reports, please. On the application itself, whilst I accept the concern about the scale and design of the buildings. This is a site where historically we've had buildings in the past. It is a site where we've had numerous uh public consultations on various schemes. Various members have been involved with various um versions of schemes over the years. One thing that has always been quite clear is there's a desire to keep a car park, a skateboard park and a public area as well as having a scheme. And I think this scheme as designed achieves all that. So I would be supporting it and ask the committee to support it here tonight. I fully understand people don't like new development in the area. However, we all support new housing coming to the area. Um. Again, it's a very difficult combination of thought that you need to achieve of having new housing for people whilst not near me. Um. Now, that is a difficult one that I know we're all going to be facing shortly in this upcoming period when we look at the Reg 19 that comes out. But it's going to be a fact that we need to have new development in the town and in the borough. Uh. This is a site that is owned by the council and partly addressing the issue earlier about M Block, um as I know it, uh near the hospital, um that should be redeveloped. Um. That is a site where the council, in answering the question specifically, um is looking to the receiver of that site and that building, which is not owned by the council, to do something with it and get on with it or sell it and do something else with the building. Because it's not acceptable. It's left as it is for about 20 years. Um. And it is wrong. But so also would be wrong not to do a development on this site. I think this scheme meets our needs for affordable housing, for sheltered accommodation for over 55s, to release property that we've got in our council stock to people to move into, to release three, four-bedroom units for families. So that combination of moving people around the stock can be achieved by the scheme, bringing them nearer the town centre, where many of those people need to be and want to be. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Any other comments? Shall we move to the recommendation that can be brought up? Recommendation delegates the application to head a planning to grant planning permission subject to finalisation of the planning conditions. Um, shall we, oh, and the completion of the two, the S one O six legal agreement. Um, right, shall we move to a vote? Is there a proposal to move to vote? And the second, I've seen that, shall we move to vote? Those people in favour of the recommendation, please indicate. No. Right. Six. Those people opposed? One, two, three. Okay, thank you. So the recommendation has passed. Thank you. To stop for a second? Yes, and if the else who just wants to disappear can do so. Right, we now move on to application C, which is two O two five O one four one, Coach Fields, Northfleet Green, Northfleet. Um, and you can see the information in front. Mister Hart.
Thank you, Chair. Um, the application before you is for change of use of an existing equestrian feed barn and equipment store to residential dwelling and associated works. Point of clarification, the applicant's agreed a change description from conversion to change of use to accurately reflect the scheme before members. The site is located within the green belt on the north side of Northfleet Green Road. The site is currently in equestrian use consisting of a detached stable horse exercise and horsemanage. The plan here shows the site in red and the wider ownership in blue. The site photographs on the screen show the existing building and the shrouding road network. Members will know the real nature of the site and the roads have no pavements or street lighting. And the building in question is on shrouded by open lawn with no hedging. This is an aerial view showing the wider context of the site. There is a mixture of agricultural uses with isolated dwellings within the vicinity of the area. Further east of the image here is Hazel's Barn, which was residential conversion of a number of buildings dealt within two thousand and thirteen. This was under the previous development plan and was in order to secure the safe, the long-term safety and security of the listed buildings on the site. The proposed block plan, um, shows the proposed layout of the building. This introduces a garden hedging where it's currently open grass. The proposed alteration shown on this slide involves the insertion of doors and windows to the building. The proposed ground and first floor layer and the extent of residential curtilage are shown on the slide before members. Turning to green belt, the site meets the definition of grey belt set in annex two of the MPPF twenty twenty four. However, the site is required to meet the requirement to paragraph one five five of the MPPF. And it fails on one five five C. This is explained in the, uh, report in paragraphs six point two one to six point two five of the report, which addresses why this fails one five five. Turning to wider green belt policy, paragraph one five four of the MPPF sets out development in the green belts inappropriate unless one of the following exceptions applies. As set out in the report, the proposal has to be considered in light of paragraph one five four G, which states limited infilling or the partial or complete redevelopment of previously developed land, including a material change of use to residential or mixed use, including residential, whether redundant or in a continuing use, excluding temporary buildings, which would not cause substantial harm to openness of the green belt. As set out in the report, the proposal does not meet the criteria of one five four G due to the harm to the openness. This is explained in detail in the, uh, report. Essentially, you've got a building in the green belt with no paraphernalia around it. Induction of windows, doors, car parking, garden and residential paraphernalia fundamentally undermines the openness of the green belt. The applicant contends the proposal should be considered at one five four C and H four. One four five C allows for the extensions or alteration of a building, providing it does not result in disproportionate additions over and above the original building. The proposal seeks a change of use and not extensions, so doesn't, one four five C is not applicable. One four four, one five four H allows for other forms of development provided they preserve the openness and do not conflict with the purposes of the land within it. This is for the reuse of buildings. Again, the proposal would fail under one five four, one five four four due to the harm to the openness as set out in the report. In summary, the proposal fails to meet any of the exceptions of the green belt in either one five four or one five five. There'd been adverse impact on the character of the area through the domestic change of the building. Um, that would be the hedging, the garden, uh, domestic paraphernalia. And it fails to comply with the SAMs payment. Uh, so there's an adverse impact on the, uh, the Ramsar and triple S side. Um, and the garden is too shallow for the size of the dwelling. So in summary, uh, officers cannot support the application. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Mister Hart. Um, looking around members of the committee, um, councillor Scotland.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, is the building a listed building or is it a new building? Thank you.
It's a fairly new building, less than ten years old.
Right, um, councillor Hart.
Thank you, Chair. Um, I should say it's, uh, a building that is ten years old and it was designed to be, uh, a barn for animals. So it's an issue where it's, uh, not suitable to be, uh, converted for human interpretation. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Chair. Um, so the question here isn't about whether or not the barn itself can be converted, um, to residential accommodation and whether the, um, a specific building control standard could be met in terms of, um, a human occupation, um, if it was converted. Um, the reason for refusal relates to the harm to openness, um, of the green, green belt. Um, and then, and that's the factor that you have to take into account. So effectively what you have is, um, a barn that was constructed for an equestrian use, um, and is open for the intents and purposes, um, along, along all of the sides. Um, and what's now being proposed is a, um, residential conversion of that barn, um, which will not only introduce residential paraphernalia in the immediate vicinity of the said barn in an area which is currently open, but will introduce, um, boundary treatments, et cetera, which will, uh, further harm openness. Um, so that's kind of where the focus of a planning committee needs to be. Um, officers aren't disputing that the barn itself, um, couldn't be potentially converted and be building reg requirements. That's not the issue at hand. The issue is, um, around the openness issue with regards to paragraphs, uh, one five four G and one five four H four, um, et cetera. Thank you, Chair.
Burden.
Just some clarification on what I think is a misleading comment, um, concerning, um, unfortunately it was brought up Hazel's Farm. Um, as to the conversion, it was justified on the basis it was a listed building. The barns themselves weren't listed and the application you referred to specifically, uh, near the site, um, in fact, is, um, free reference is, uh, twenty fourteen, one one three zero, um, permitted in twenty fourteen for the demolition in part and reconstruction of a potato store for seven houses. Um, that was the application that I think you're referring to. There were barns further into the site, um, which were converted. They didn't need the construction of seven houses to justify them. And that was a completely separate application. How a potato barn, a, uh, concrete frame structure, uh, portal frame structure that were pulled down justifies refusal on this, I don't understand. Um, as to why you brought that up into the conversation, I'll come back to debate later, but, um, I thought was strange.
If I'm, if I may, Chair, just to kind of, uh, clarify matters. Um, obviously, we're, we're asking members to make a decision based on what's before them in, in terms of this planning application. Um, whilst Mister Hart has provided some, some context, um, that's not key to the consideration of this application. What's key to the consideration of this application, especially given the length of time, um, since that decision and where we are today, is whether this proposal meets the requirements of the development plan, um, and material considerations, i.e. the MPPF. And the revised MPPF that's been issued, um, in December of two thousand and twenty four, um, asks you to look at the various paragraphs, one five four and one five five. Um, and, um, effectively the section on green belt and the officer, uh, recommendation, um, and the officer, as I said in the officer report, is that this proposal doesn't meet the requirements of the MPPF, um, and that particular section. Thank you, Chair.
Sorry, Chair, can I come back? Uh, you're quite correct to correct members, um, when we bring in non-planning matters to a consideration issue. Why should an officer be allowed to bring in a non-planning matter, you just described it, to a planning consideration issue? It should, shouldn't go both ways, the way you described.
Thank you, councillor. I've seen councillor Jess.
More a statement, but I think let's jump forward a bit, um, in terms of, let's talking about other applications and no doubt that Shazad will have a well-crafted answer, but I seem to remember in the last planning committee, uh, where we were presented with the Pear Tree Lane, um, you know, the, the traveller site, um, development. I don't really recall officers picking up on undermining spatial layout and character of the area. You know, an unacceptability of private amenity space. I just, I just feel that we're sort of, we haven't got a consistent approach. Um, no doubt there will be an answer, but we'll just put it out there.
Thank you, Chair. Um, as I'm sure Mister, sorry, councillor Jess will, will be aware. Um, that particular report says that in the officer's view, um, that particular site met the requirements of grey belt. Um, this particular site doesn't meet the requirements of grey belt, neither does it meet the requirements of paragraphs one five four, uh, and one five five. Um, so on that basis, um, that's what's effectively set out in the, in the report. So it's, um, it's a case of the officers taking a fair hand to each application, considering the requirements of the MPPF. However, on this occasion, when you do consider the requirements of the MPPF, the conclusion is different. That's a matter of planning judgment, um, and is what the regulations require us to do. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, uh.
So just, I'm coming back on that. I don't really split hairs over this, but it's interesting because your final point was that this is a matter of planning judgment. Okay, so there are so many, excuse the pun here, grey areas, especially when we're talking about the grey belt, is it green belt, grey belt? I just think, you know, we, we want to kind of hammer down on certain applications and then we're, we're totally, totally kind of relaxed on some quite controversial applications. And I think, uh, might be worth as an authority us kind of getting a narrative straight and correct as to, to this. So we're not relying on, you know, varying judgment, which seems to kind of flicker with the wind.
Shazad.
Thank you, thank you, Chair. Um, so in terms of any grey areas, well, it's pretty black and white. The advice that I've been given is that the officer report, uh, and the judgment of planning committee, um, with regards to Pear Tree Lane was, um, accurate. Um, and on that basis, I don't think there's a grey area. Um, with regards to this application, the officer's, um, advice is black and white. Um, we have taken a professional approach in going through the, the great green belt, including the grey belt element of it. Um, and that argument forward. Um, I appreciate that the changes are a bit, uh, complex and, and difficult in nature to understand. Um, for a variety, um, of people, including members of the public. Um, however, we're just following government guidance, um, and the MPPF. And when you follow that guidance, you have to reach planning judgment. Um, if anyone else has followed that guidance and reaches a different conclusion, I'm more than willing to entertain that. By this moment in time, nobody's actually gone through that argument and reached a different conclusion. Thank you, Chair.
Councillor Harding.
Uh, thank you, Chair. It's, uh, I hope you can reach out the problem I'm having because I'm asked about the structure itself, you know, how old it is, if that's the structure of the building is the problem. And apparently it is, the build, it would exist, which as we actually, isn't the problem. What's the problem is the, uh, the erasement of the garden that would be built around it. That's what I'm looking at, far and after, and I could see we've got to cover, hedge it, uh, some, uh, bits of shrubs, uh, which is a garden, basically front garden, back garden. It's not open world, it's not that much bigger than the actual. Um, and I'm trying to work out, you know, looking at different cases. Is, uh, structure not a problem, but the insulation of a garden is the problem because it's, uh, what, what the word is, uh, M F F, whatever you call it. Um, but I, I find it very difficult to relate to that. Thank you.
Do you want to come back?
If I may, Chair. Um, so again, um, one has to go through the paragraphs and text set out within the MPPF. The MPPF sections on green belt are asking you to analyse the building and whether it can be converted, per se, in that sense. Um, what they're asking you to is look at the, the concept of the building, what changes are needed to that, what the impact of that is. Um, and if they meet the requirements of a particular section, um, i.e. one five four G and one five four H, um, in this instance for um, you would say, okay, that element is fine, but that's all caveated with, and the key there is caveated with, um, the consideration of harm to openness. And if the harm, if there's harm to openness, the, uh, MPPF directs you to refuse the application. Now, what you've effectively described, councillor, is that the applicant and the proposal that they've put forward harms openness.
Right, can we? Right, um, councillor Burden.
Description of openness, um, I accept that there is always a question around that. If you put up, can you put up the aerial photograph of the area, please? That, uh, that's the one, yeah, lovely. Can you describe to me what those big things are on the top left-hand corner? Um, that cover pretty much two fields that were objected to by people in Hazel's Farm and those, uh, properties, uh, built in the potato store. Um, how does that not be an effect on openness? Can you please confirm what they are, how big they are, and why are they not a damage on openness?
Uh, through you, Chair. Um, they're agricultural polytunnels, um, and they are not inappropriate in the green belt as they meet one five four A, which says, um, development in the green belt is inappropriate unless one of the following exceptions applies. Buildings for agriculture and forestry. So therefore those buildings, um, are not inappropriate in the green belt.
Right, can I suggest we move on to, um, the speaker in support of the application and then come and revisit this whole argument afterwards? and then come and revisit this whole argument afterwards before we decide on a vote? So can I invite Mr. Briggs as the agent?
Thank you, Chair. Uh the application is submitted uh for the exist, for the change to of the existing question barn to a residential dwelling and associated works. Over the last eight years, the applicant has created an equestrian use at the site, including a stable building, horse exerciser and horse menage. The applicant who looks after injured and ill horses through to their recovery has found that they are able to provide everything they need for the caring and feeding of horses within the stables at the site. The existing barn that is subject to this application was originally constructed at the site for storage of feed and equipment. However, it's become surplus to the requirements of the stapling. At the moment, the applicant has to travel a three-mile round trip by car to and from the site around eight to ten times a day to look after the horses, which is not sustainable. This can increase up to hourly trips twenty-four hours a day, depending on the illness of the horses. To allow the applicant to live at the site and to provide more effective care to the horses on a twenty-four-hour basis and to reduce the travel movements by the applicant to and from the site, it is proposed to convert the existing barn to a residential dwelling. In addition to the reduction in travel movements by the applicant, the proposals reuse an existing barn with minimal changes rather than constructing a new building. These positive attributes therefore make the proposed conversion to a residential dwelling a sustainable form of development. There are only a few alterations proposed to the exterior of the existing barn to change it to a residential dwelling, and the building will retain its rustic character. The form and character of the barn will therefore be very much the same as it is at the moment. The curliche of the new property and its private garden area has been drawn around the barn so not to unduly protrude or encroach onto the adjoining paddock land. The private garden area amounts to hundred and twenty square metres, which is actually twenty percent larger than the size of gardens specified in the council's residential layout guidance for this type of property. So there is enough uh private space provided for the property. It is considered the proposal strike the right balance in terms of providing enough private mancy space for the property without unduly encroaching into the countryside. In terms of the impact of the proposed development on the green belt, it is the applicant's case that the proposed works fall within the allowed exception C and H of paragraph hundred and fifty-four of the MPPF. These exceptions allow both alterations to and the reuse of existing buildings, which is what is proposed in this application. There are no other of the green belt exceptions listed in paragraph hundred and fifty-four that are applicable to the proposed works. The officers referred to G, but this is neither, this proposal or neither, an infill development, and they're not uh a redevelopment. So in that sense, G is not applicable to this scheme. And because the the development is an allowed exception and uh C or H and or H, um for that purposes, it's not considered under the grey belt paragraph one five five. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillors, any questions? No? All right, I'm looking at other members. No, thank you, Miss, thank you, Mr. Biggs. That's good. Okay, so we have a recommendation. Um anybody want to comment at this moment in time, member of the committee? Yes. Councillor Jessel.
Simply to say, I don't think it's very black and white. I think it's very grey and uh in my view, I I can't see why we wouldn't support this in 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 an existing building. It's obviously ancillary use to 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 the equestrian use and um again, I just can't quite get my head around this whole grey and this grey area element. So um and I think we've got a history of allowing some quite inappropriate developments in green slash grey belt in previous meetings, so my, I minded to actually support this.
All right, I'll take the committee first and then we'll look at other councillors.
Thank you, Chair. My concern is that it's not an old building and it was built as a a barn, a barn for animals in, and then decided that it wasn't wanting to be a barn for animals in a green belt area. And for me, it's a little bit worrying that we're talking about opening up the green belt because our concern is I'm going to burn, build a barn for my animal, couple of years and I'm not going to convert it because it's built exactly like a house for animals and it's been converted. So it does really worry me and I think we're opening up a massive cannibalism for the green belt. I really do. So therefore, I'm going to be saying no. Thank you.
Um Shazad, you wanted to comment previously.
Uh thank you, Chair. Just to point out, um councillor Jessel, uh appreciate the comments that you've made, but you've not um advocated why the proposal meets the requirements of the MPPF and the green belt section. Um so it harms openness and I haven't heard a conclusion as to why it doesn't.
Uh councillor Elliot.
Thank you, Chair. Um I'd like to echo some 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 points that councillor Jessel has made. Um we do our public a disservice if we apply rules inconsistently, um whether that be a perception or whether that be reality. Um a few weeks ago, we did, we were recommended to approve an application that was in the uh the grey belt, as it was called, um which was new structures, I call them caravans, that was new structures in open space. This is just putting some windows on an existing building. It's not new structures, we're not encroaching on more space. All right, we put a garden around it, but that garden to me looks minimal to try and minimise the impact on open space. Therefore, I believe it meets the criteria for allowing that open space. Um and I'm going to be minded to approve this.
Um Shazad, do you want to comment?
Thank you, Chair. Um two points. Unlike Pear Tree Lane, this doesn't meet the requirements of grey belt, so you can't consider it in the same context of Pear Tree Lane. So you can't use Pear Tree Lane as an example. Um and just with regards to um the comment about um open space, we're not discussing open space, we're discussing openness and the impact uh on openness.
Okay, I've seen councillor Harding, then I'll come back to councillor Jessel. I I'll bring you in in a minute, but I'm taking the members first. Yes, you you may well have done, but the best will in the world, I did say I was going to invite the committee first to comment and then other members.
Hardin.
Uh thank you, Chair. I mean, we we could debate how open it's open, what what, I mean, if you look at the satellite picture, you couldn't get a more open place than that one is. It is not a a structure that is overlooking any other building, the facility, so it's not an obstruction to anything. And I can't find anything that would obstruct any idea that we could allow this application to go forward. I mean, we are talking about a small garden around it. Um I mean, if it was in the middle of the town, I might have some doubts about this, you know, uh but we are looking at an extraordinarily open landscape and that's the of the uh right-hand side of the picture, we see whose heads are there, that you could say that would be an obstruction to openness. Uh so there's too many variables in here, so I'd say it's not exactly uh black and white, it's a big grey area, but it is up to our interpretation, what do you think, how open, it's an open landscape. And to put in a rule today, it's it's an obstruction to openness. I think it's getting a little bit silly now. Um let's be honest, I I I will be supporting this application because I think it it doesn't interfere with any rules that anyone wants to put up with. Thank you very much, Chair.
Same, councillor Jessel, and then I'll come to councillor Burden.
I don't want to labour the point because Shazad will hate me by the end of this, but the point isn't that we're comparing, you know, trying to use uh Pear Tree Lane as a benchmark for us to, you know, therefore determine this application. The point is that there are inconsistencies, in our view, on that one and frankly in this one, and that's the point. It's not about, you know, us using that as a benchmark to to compare, but a very dangerous precedent, in our view, was set that time when certainly there was no real solid evidence of that being the grey belt. Again, it comes down to this kind of judgement, which which seems to vary, in my view, but I don't want to labour that point and, you know, don't need a response on either, but just wanted to kind of put it out there.
Right, thank you. Can we try and keep to this application, if at all possible? Um.
Keeping to this application, um it is a application I'd ask members to consider um using their view, their opinion, um which in my mind, I've always argued is equally valid to a planning officer opinion and view when it comes to interpreting um planning rules uh that need to be interpreted. Um now, in this case, I would suggest that the report has got some issues in there which I would disagree with. Um for example, there's referencing there to the road connecting um most technically possible, the routes can be walked along um in paragraph six point twenty-four. Um I walk those routes twice a day um with my dog, as it happens. Um I don't find it technically impossible to walk along there. I managed to avoid all the cars and the vehicles coming down, much to the upset, no doubt, many other people. Um but they always avoid hitting me, which I appreciate. Um one of my neighbours walks from Isar Drives to and has done regularly to Bluewater along those roads. Um so it's not technically impossible or difficult to walk on. So having that as a sustainable issue has been a reason for refusal, as set out in the report, doesn't work. It does meet the issues as far as I can see on compliance of using old buildings in the MPPF. If it was a building that had been built um prior to just five, six, seven years ago, it possibly was set under the rules of permitted development anyway, um because it would have been an old building. If it had been used as a farmstead, farm building, it would have been compliant. Um and that's what is being done elsewhere. This is not opening floodgates to dozens of other properties coming forward on the basis of this permission. Everything's viewed on its own merit, as we're always being told, but I think there's enough merits, if you just look at that photo, if one of the arguments being put tonight is openness, you've got the uh tunnels um which are put up, you've got a scrapyard just down the road, other developments around it, the um stable building, there's a lot of things going on that affects the openness. And we're worrying about a on and within the report, a little timber fence has been erected that will disturb the openness around the garden. Now, that does seem quite subjective, and I think members are equally able to judge subjective as officers are. Um that I don't see a little timber fence has been detrimental to the openness of the green belt. Putting a couple of windows in a building that's already there, I don't again think is detrimental to the green belt. So I think there are enough grounds within MPPF to go forward. MPPF also has a very clear uh requirement within it of permitting schemes. There's an emphasis on um permitting an application coming forward under MPPF unless it's contrary to the local plan. As our reports here tonight are all indicating, we don't have a compliant local plan. Um one's coming, hopefully, but we don't have one. The last one was put out in twenty fourteen, which is, by the reports here tonight, technically is illegal, um because it's more than five years old, and that's your own officer reports. And the one before that was nineteen ninety-seven. So come on, let's let's start getting serious here. Bring in a local plan, bring in something we can then use as the background to this, but I think this is not an issue of non-compliance on MPPF. We can find ways of doing it, members can decide.
Shazad, do you want to come in?
Sorry, as members, we need to make a decision on on this application. I just need to come um on one point. The existing local plan i- is legal and the policies within that local plan are used to um to determine planning applications and appeal after, the vast majority of the policies within that plan have been found to be sound.
Can I perhaps come in? Um I think councillor Scholar put his finger on something, which is, I mean, I've spoken in this this meeting, these meetings, planning meetings on many occasions, lamenting the locking down of barns and buildings and they can, you know, why can't we use them, particularly in rural areas? And I've been shot down almost all the time by people who've determined that this will be the beginning of the wedge into the green belt. Now, the simple fact is that we can't muddle it up with grey belt, this isn't grey belt, this is green belt. If you want to defend the green belt, then surely you would not want to see what is a permitted development with a barn, with an equestrian area, converted into a five-bedroom luxury house. If you want to do that, then fair enough, then don't tell us off when everybody else starts to say, well, you're eroding the green belt, you're setting a principle, you're setting a precedent. And that, to me, is the clear point. We have very strong advice that this is against the green belt regulations. Now, no problem, if you want to go ahead with it, okay, but then you justify it to other places, and I know other parishes who are concerned about agricultural buildings being converted into other more residential uses. And I just think that, you know, you either say, we agreed to protect the green belt until regulations change, and if the regulations change, fair enough, or we say, well, I've got my own opinion on what openness is. Well, so be it, you know, as far as I'm concerned, that's all right, but surely we have to abide by the officer disrecommendation where we're related to green belt, otherwise we throw the whole blooming thing out of the window. And remember, there is a clear debate nationally about whether green belt should be eroded. And fair be it for me to say, I think it's the government I support that is actually putting that whole issue forward, but I don't mind. Basically, that's that's my rant for the evening. Apologies. Any other comments? Councillor Elliot.
I'm sorry. I was just gonna just, from my point of view, on on those points, um from what I can see, there's no change of footprint, so there's there's no further uh pushing onto the green belt here. So that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Harding, do you want to come in? Yes.
Okay, what what was said here is uh we're not talking about a construction of a brand-new building on the green belt, we're actually talking about the conversion of a existing building. And uh this building, as far as I understand, is ten years old, so I'm sure people ten years ago didn't really plan uh to convert it ten years later. Uh it was used for horses, and they've made that point, and now they've they've decided to convert it. So we are talking about an existing building, not a new building on the green belt. So we're not trading anything on the actual uh green belt itself. So uh I can't see any issue, you know, in the future. I mean, if people want to convert whatever they've got, a shed, a garage, we have to take on its merits with the openness, you know, whatever you want to debate on, but I'm sure that we will debate on these, we will be flexible, but we have to be flexible and understanding of this point. Thank you, Chair.
No problem. Thank you. Um councillor Scholar.
Thank you, Chair. The building's not ten years old. If you look in the report, this was done in twenty nineteen, the ninth and the first. It was built, it was standing permission, the building was then built, so it's less than five years old, the building being built, if you look at it that way. So you're saying you can go and build any new, any barn and then build it to the specifics of a house in a green belt land and then turn it and say, I'm going to convert that after a couple of years, once I get me, you know, me me better use out of it. It was a great big field on the black, on the opposite side of the black, are we going to open that? We've got someone to let down, build a burn, a barn, and then convert that into an house after as well, to the Pacific side of the to the specific size of what they want. We are eroding the green belt. If that had been a historic barn, I would agree with it. Yes, preserve it and build it and turn it into a house. But I'm not agreeing to someone building a house, a barn, five years ago in the shape of a house and then converting it on green belt. That is wrong and you know it's wrong. We do talk about grey belt, what you want to call it. And I understand that it's not a standing building on a grey belt. But that is green belt and we will preserve that for our local people and our children. Sorry. Thank you. Rant over.
Right, I've seen councillor.
Thank you very much, Chair. Just two very minor comments on general principles. One, I wouldn't want to see a sort of a loophole as established. I make no comment on whether or not this is one, but barns one year, houses the next. Cannot be a loophole for developers, no matter where it is. Whatever, you cannot have one thing and then two years later the next. That is, I'm not passing comment on this one because the time may have elapsed or not, but it shouldn't be used as loophole. This is a message, I think, wider as a matter of principle and we make sure it's a matter of policy, that it isn't a backdoor, a development by the backdoor permission. And my final one is the old maxim, Chair, for colleagues at this point, and it's officers advise, members decide. And that's how it works in the system. So officers advise all the time and that is exactly that. But members of whichever party, you know, the public voted in and that's where the democratic right comes in. So members decide and that's why we're here. So advice is exactly that, Chair.
Thank you. Any further comments? Nope. Shall we now move to a vote? Can I see recommendation for a vote? Yes, great. Right, we have a recommendation in front of us. The amended recommendation for refusal permission subject to following outlined reasons. You can read them for yourself. You've got them in front of you. We've had a request for a vote. Those in favour of the recommendation, please indicate. One, two, three, four, five. Those against the recommendation? Four. So the recommendation is accepted by the committee. Thank you. That then brings us on, if we can, to the next two. That's D, which is the builder's yard lower range road. Could we have an introduction to this?
Thank you, Chair. The application is for the builder's yard lower range road. This is an application for variation of condition two attached to planning approval 2019 520. This is to allow the increase in the building height, a new ramped and stepped approach to both principal entrances, along with admitting the gardens to units two, three, four and five. The site is located at the far eastern end of lower range road and was formerly builder's yard to its closure. The shrouding area is a mixture of 19th and 20th century residential dwellings and to the east is various commercial uses. The plan there shows a red line of the site. These are some site photographs showing the site as it is now. This is an aerial image which you can see here shows members the varying sort of quality and difference of house design in the area. Okay, turning to the changes. The change is required to increase the height of the building by 1.6 metres in order that the lower ground floor can have a void to allow floodwater to go below the building in order to satisfy flood risk requirements. The changes also relate to, let me a second, a new ramped and stepped approach to both entrances because of the raised platform of the building shown on the slides there. So the top slide shows approved and the below one shows proposed changes. As continued, you can see here the building essentially raised up and the red line sort of shows the changes to the building height. Okay. And this shows the entrance on the west side and you can see the ramped and stepped access that goes in to compensate for the increased height of the building. Proposed changes have no detrimental impact on the character appearance of the area. The height increase will not be detrimental to shrouding properties and the loss of the private garden areas are not a policy requirement as it is flatted development and the area becomes communal garden for all residents. The recommendations planning committee is grant planning permission subject to the conditions set out in the report and delegate authority ahead of planning to make any necessary modifications to the proposed conditions. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? Peter.
Thank you, Chair. Can I just ask why the flooding wasn't taken into consideration in the first place? Thank you.
Through you, Chair. It was dealt with by a different applicant and at that point in time, a condition was included to ensure ground level had to be a certain height. And when the current owner acquired the site, they noticed this condition. And in order to meet the conditional requirements, had to change the design of the building.
Councillor Muckty.
Thank you very much, Chair. As a question of matter of clarification, condition free is about the surface materials, the materials that are being used on this. And as it's not been done, it's a matter of decision here today. Of other applications on this report today, we mentioned the design guide, design for Gravesham in 2024. This one doesn't, almost refers back to a previous one and under the corporate strategy, the core strategy local plan. If I'm looking correctly, it doesn't really fit in the character of the area under that design guide. So a matter of taking on account consistency comments. Does this meet now then, given that it hasn't been executed? Does it meet with design for Gravesham and the consistency of the design for the area? Because it doesn't quite look like that, Chair. So it'd be good to see if, as this is condition under, condition free, it meets that requirement.
Through you, Chair. The application has been approved and implemented on site. So they have commenced work on site to lawfully implement the scheme. And with the variation condition, we only look at the elements being changed. So we're looking purely at the increase in the height along with the change of the entrances. So therefore, whilst we can't consider the whole scheme as a whole, when discharging the conditions for materials, we will of course take into account design for Gravesham.
Shane, do you want to come back?
Only as a matter of technicality, Chair. 6.24, page 157. Condition free has been discharged by this application 2021 1523. However, as no works have commenced above ground, a condition still required to ensure the development is maintained using improved materials and includes the proposed ramped stepwork. So that's the reason it was raised. So therefore, and I'm grateful to the officers' comment that design for Gravesham will be taken into account, which isn't in that report at all as a recommendation. So I may suggest through your good offices, Chair, that that is added as an additional thing because of the very condition that's meant there, that it is taken into account that as it moves forward.
Thank you, Chair. Just to provide some clarity, all that condition is effectively saying is that the applicant will have to put in a further application to discharge that condition. And obviously, when they do that, they will have to have regard to design for Gravesham and we'll put that on as an informative, so that's clear.
Other matters to be raised? Right, for pre, have a recommendation, we grant planning permission subject to conditions set out, we support and delegate the authorities ahead of planning to make any necessary modification, deletion or addition to proposed conditions, which I think covers the point which has been raised. Right, can we put this to the vote, please? Those in favour? So you, councillor Harding? All right, let's take it as eight to one. Are you voting against or? Right, unanimous then. Thank you. Good. Right, that then brings us on, hopefully, if we certainly to the hive, which is item six E. And it's going past bedtime. Right, okay, the hive.
Thank you, Chair. The application is for the Hive, Northfleet in Gravesend. This relates to various changes to the roof of the building. For context, this is the site of the Hive, which is a tower block with commercial use below it. It's a local centre. These are some site photographs of the building in question. This is an existing aerial view of the building and you can see the roof in question subject to the application. Okay, so the proposal relates to the roof of the building with a number of small changes to improve the energy efficiency of the building. This essentially requires removing some existing vent channels, replacing the edge protection with new freestanding edge protection, changes the capping to a new GRP trim system and changing one door to a window as shown on the plans before you. Oops, sorry, go back one. And in addition, there are 55 solar panels posed on the roof to help create more green energy for the building. Essentially, the scheme is deemed to comply with development plan and subject to the conditions before you, officers support the proposal. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Any comments? Right, councillor Elliot.
Thank you, Chair. I think this is an excellent idea, the solar panels. Just a question regards to how does that, do the residents benefit from that? How does that work? Thank you.
Through you, Chair. That's not something planners will get involved in. We're purely looking at the planning merits of the solar panels, property services or the other Gravesham departments could maybe answer your question outside of this remit of this chamber. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Scholar and then councillor Milner.
Just to add to Aaron, they did it at Carl Ekman as well, put solar panels on there. So it actually lights all the building during the day, not the actual house, it's the actual interior light. So I think it does bring down the service charge. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Milner.
Yes, thank you. Peter's just said more, as I was going to say, it's a way forward to have the things on the roof that are solar panels. So, yeah, I welcome this.
Thank you, councillor. Any further comments? Right, can we move to a vote? Says he from the chair on this particular occasion. Yes, so we've got recommendation for permission. Those in favour of recommendation, please indicate. And unanimous, thank you. Back to reports for information, there are none. Plan application determined under delegated powers, a copy somewhere. Any other business? There's no one, any other business. No need to exclude anybody, no item B. So many thanks and have a good evening. Evening. What remains of Eve.